Mr. Phillips, Mr. Warren has joined. The only person not in yet is Mr. Heinel.
I have to work on my computer. Thank you.
Well, folks, it is now 5:30 p.m. If I will have you alert us if we have additional board members that join our session this evening. First thing I want to do is welcome all of the board members and all of the individuals from the public who are joining us this evening for our second work session of the this 2020 Heads of Zoning Map Plan Process. My name is Scott Phillips and I'm the Chairman of the Baltimore County Planning Board. The members of the planning board, representing both their individual districts or the county executive, include Mr. Schweitzer, Ms. Panero, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Halupka, Ms. Haffert, Ms. Burzens, Ms. Wolfson, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinel, Mr. Herbst, Mr. Pirlo, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Baer. We are going to begin this evening as we did yesterday and I'll give this kind of the basic understanding of ground rules as we're going to work through this list of zoning items for District Three and District Four. The objective will be to get through the issues in an orderly manner. We will allow for first for those items in which there are no issues and the board members have agreed to accept staff recommendations. We will go through a vote to accept to accept all of those issues. We will then take the sequestered issues in order. The board member who requested that the item be sequestered will have an opportunity to share their perspective on why they do not agree with the staff's recommendation. The staff will then give their rationale behind the county's position. There will be an opportunity for the board member to make a motion as to what they believe the zoning should be or a board member to make a motion as to what they believe the zoning should be. We will then hear any unreadiness from board members on that issue. And at the completion of their unreadiness, we will call for the vote on each issue. I want to thank everyone for your cooperation last night. We had a long night. We actually had fewer issues this evening for Districts Three and Four than we did for Districts One and Two. We may actually make the NFL Draft this evening, folks, since that is the entertainment of the night.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes?
I have two items I want to bring up to your attention from last night.
Okay.
Two zero one four. That was an issue that Mr. Pirlo made the motion and then recused himself. We missed that when we went back on that on those scenarios.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you wanted to correct that before we start in third. And then on issue two dash zero one six, the motion that you approved had specific zoning acreages per zoning classification. When we mapped that, the acreages were a little bit different. And again, if you would put that map up on the screen. The map that she's showing is followed the discussion of where the lines would be. The BLAS on the north side that would provide access via Colonial. The two parcels up on Reisterstown that would stay with the DR five five and that little rectangle on the front that went to BL. So these acreages don't match what was in your motion, but we think this map reflects what you were intending. But we just wanted to make sure the map is correct. If it's not, we can change it. If it is correct, then we probably will need a motion to override the acreages that you included from last night.
I made that motion, so I'll make a motion to adjust it to this.
I'll second that.
All right, so we're going through a hold on one second, get to my notes from last night, particularly two zero one six. We'll deal with that one first. And I see that is pretty different, significantly different than what we had laid out. Let's proceed with the corrections for District Two. Mr. Warren has made a motion to adjust the recommendations to reflect the map that we now have. And I would ask that we take a screenshot, Jeff, of the map so we're very, very clear. But I see BLAS DR five point five at point four and BL at point oh two. Is that correct?
Right.
That motion was made. It was the second by who made the second?
Hartman.
Mr. Hartman. Warren and Hartman. This is a motion to correct the recommendation from four twenty-two twenty. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed have the same right. Not hearing any. That motion carries. This is a correction through the action taken last night. Mr. Baer not on the line, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Mr. Baer is not on the line. So that is it. For Mr. Baer.
Correct. Mr. Heinel, I don't see Mr. Heinel either.
Okay. All right. Jeff, you're gonna have to help me with that. Get that one. Let's go back to two zero one four.
I can make that motion if you want. The motion was to accept planning board's recommendation, right?
That is correct. We're going back to two one four. It is an item that Mr. Pirlo recused himself on. And so therefore, a motion should come from someone other than Mr. Pirlo.
I'll make the motion to accept planning board's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Baer and Mr. Heinel are absent. Okay. Are there any other corrections from our work session on yesterday?
That's all we picked up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hold on a second, guys. I got too many pieces of paper on my desk trying to keep keep the score here. All right. So for District Three, we're going to do this the same way as we did yesterday evening. I am going to list the sequestered items and offer an opportunity. If there was an item that's not listed that a member wanted to be sequestered, discuss further, let me know. List of sequestered items. District Three. Three zero zero two, three zero zero five, three zero zero six, three zero zero seven, three zero zero nine, three zero one zero, three zero one five, three zero two zero, three zero two one, three zero two, three zero two three, three zero two six, three zero two seven, three zero two eight, three zero three two, three zero three four. Those are the items that have been sequestered for District Three. Any additions? All right, I'm the chair. We'll entertain a motion on the acceptance of staff's recommendations for all but those mentioned.
I shall move.
Hold it, hold it. I think Nancy, you gotta make sure the language is right. Nancy, are you with me?
Yes, I am. Do you hear me?
I do.
You've moved to accept the recommendations of the Baltimore County Planning Board staff for the log of issues in District Three, except for the sequestered items listed by Chairman Phillips.
You've heard the motion. Everybody on mute? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion is made by Ms. Wolfson. Any unreadiness? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same right. Motion carries. Through the list of sequestered items, starting with three zero zero two, which is sequestered by Kathy Wilson. Do I have a echo?
A little bit.
Yes. Sure, why?
Does somebody have two misses on?
I do not this evening, so and I didn't yesterday, so I'm not sure what's going on.
I see Mr. McGinnis in three different times, so he may have one something else open. That would be a suggestion to check.
No, I my sound is off. Okay. Ms. Wolfson? Three zero zero two.
Okay, this three zero zero two is for adding nine point seven eight acres to the five point seven five acres already zone BL on the property known as Friendly Farms. It does increase their BL zoning by seventy percent. My concern in the rural area is that BL is pretty far reaching in addition to the current purposes that the restaurant uses, including the restaurant gift shop and agricultural use. The BL designation would allow other things like bank building offices, trade schools, pretty broad range. By special exception, they could be granted use for a hotel. So I do recognize that the neighborhood and and many, many, many people love Friendly Farms. They seem to really take factor. But you know, you can't poke a tiny hole in a balloon, so you know, then my major concern is that over time, these uses could be converted. And that is the reason why I brought for sequester.
Kathy, would you feel comfortable if they did something like a BL with a covenant?
Nancy, let's do this. Let's stay within our in our in our process. Staff has had a conversation with with the owners, I'm assuming. Can staff give us the their response?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, hi, this is Joseph Wiley. I'm the third district planner for the CSNP process. We did agree to go with the requested zoning. I did speak with the representative for the owners and they said that they are willing to put up a covenant. That's what they're seeking, so but they did not represent, say, who they're looking to put a covenant in with.
Well, would they be willing to put a covenant in that would limit the use of the additional BL to the restaurant, gift shop and agricultural use that they're now using for that property?
I think that was a question to staff and that's a I'm not sure that you will know the answer.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer.
Well, if that
Can you share what they stated they wanted to do? I believe at some point they provided some clarity as to what they wanted to do with that.
I'm under the impression, I'm going to let staff do it first and then I'll give my comments.
All they said, they are willing to put a covenant agreement that limits the uses, but they didn't specify exactly what they would agree to.
Okay, at some point, I thought, and somebody can correct me, my understanding is they were looking to do events. I'm not clear on what size. We even had the idea of a size of a facility that they were considering. We had reviewed the potential size under roof of what they could do with this zoning.
My understanding is they don't have specific plans yet, but they want this to increase the ability in the the expansion of the restaurant, the business.
Okay.
Well, what I Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Al.
Right. I am under the impression that what they're looking to do is restaurant kind of events. The reason they want to expand the BL is to be able to do outside events. A lot of young people like to get married outside, you know, under the stars, under the moon, whatever it might be. They think that they can develop it. I was in a wedding down in Louisiana that was at a beautiful facility that had an indoor facility, but then everything that we attended was outside. I think that's what they're looking to do. When you look at the entire acres of Friendly Farm, and I think all of us have been there over the years, at least those of us that are older. You know, it's a hundred and forty fifty acres, something like that. I don't think we're really increasing the acreage that much. And it's really there in the middle. They would like to be able to use their barn for events as well. So I think it all does tie into their dining and catering, you know, kinds of events. You know, is what they're looking for. They're not looking to put banks or other things on there. And I think they'll sign whatever covenant you might refer to there. But I think to allow them to grow their business here for catering, restaurant kind of whatever, basically in the middle of their, you know, of their property, I think is a reasonable request from somebody that's been part of our community in Baltimore County for fifty years at least, Tommy. That's what I can remember back that far.
Would more restrictive zoning allow them to do the outdoor events and use the barn? I don't know if they are or instead of BL.
I think you give them the BL and you again make them sign a covenant that they're using it for restaurant kind catering, you know, those kinds of of things. So it's 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 attuned to their their use. I mean, they're not looking to build a retail center, not even necessarily, you know, an ice cream stand. I know there's one out there someplace, too. You know, they're looking to do catering kind of events, I think, is their purpose.
Kathy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I said I agree with Howard as far as I would be willing to make a motion to accept staff recommendations with the addition of a covenant limiting the operations to restaurant and existing use uses.
I think it's easy to describe. I really do.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I support Friendly Farms, but I wonder, do they need that much acreage on the south side of that property around the pond?
I'm sorry, Wayne, I didn't hear you.
I just only questioned whether there is a need for that much acreage on the south side next to the pond. Did you hear that?
Yes, I did. So we're talking about this area between the building and the woods?
Yes.
Is it flat?
It's sloping slightly.
I think there was there was some discussion on their part that they were going to use more of the grassy areas, not the farm areas. I would suggest to you that, again, my Louisiana wedding, the the canopy that they got married under faced a beautiful pond that had a big fountain in the middle of it that was very pretty to watch. So I think that that's a nice kind of view for people to, you know, to have, but they the the understanding I have is they were not looking to expand into the farm areas, but onto the grassy areas that are around the building.
I'm going to recuse myself anyway for this.
What are their hours of operation at this time?
I believe they're generally open till about nine, nine thirty, something like that. I don't know if there is catering. I understand that could be, you know, something they have to come into as well if it's is there much housing around there anywhere? I really don't know.
So I actually think they stopped taking guests at seven p.m. They actually closed early. They do have, I believe, a downstairs facility where they do group events today in the main building. Not not sure that that fixes one way or the other. All right, we've had, I mean, there's no other readiness. We're ready for a motion.
I move to accept planning's recommendation with a covenant to limit operations to current uses.
I second that.
Can I ask a question? Would that, do they do weddings there? Would they be allowed to do weddings, Kathy, or no?
Kath, could you could you do restaurant and catering? Are you comfortable with that?
I mean, catering can be off premises, on premises. Do they do off premises catering at this time?
Yes.
They do? Is that Wayne?
Yes.
How do you feel about that, Wayne?
Well, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from any further discussion.
Okay.
Both the owners were former students and associated with my bachelor program.
Well, I mean, to the extent that I do know that it's very expensive to maintain a farm, you know, I I would hesitate to to put a limit on that as it is related to eating and entertainment essentially. But I mean, it's you get into weddings, you're getting into fireworks are common at weddings, loud music is common at weddings, and that may not be compatible.
Once again, my sit, they're doing group events already, whether that's weddings or not. So they do have somebody could check this. I believe they probably have a caterer's license, so they're licensed to do group events. Now, I'm not certain about that, Kathy, but I am pretty certain that they are using it for their purpose. They've got buses going out there.
Yeah.
Seconded that motion. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor. We're taking unreadiness. It is to accept recommendation of staff requesting that they enter into a covenant existing uses.
Chairman, can I ask a question so I'm clear before I vote? Would that mean they'd be able to do weddings and events there under the current motion?
And that I'm not so that would say we've got to understand what they're doing there today. And I think we're also, we're all making our assumptions of what they're doing there today. Nancy, next.
Then I could amend it to current operations.
That would cover them if there was catering there.
Is that satisfactory?
Indeed.
Mr. Chairman, this is Pete. Again, I'll offer sort of some assistance in this. Whatever the covenant says, we'll make sure that weddings, you know, where it falls with us before you make your final decision, I guess, is what we can do. We can look into the because that could fall under a temporary event. I'm not positive with the code and that would be fall under sort of maybe the health department or the depths, rules, regulations, or even PAIs. So what we can do is look into what are the requirements for that. So it may not be whether it's BL or RC, too. It may be fall under a special event permit, which is permitted so many times per year. So we'll look into that and make sure the covenant covers it, okay?
All right, very good. So we've got we've got a general understanding of what the objective is of the board. Staff will do further review. And we will have to come back in May to make our final votes on all of these. If there's some corrections to be done, we'll deal with it at that point. So you have heard the motion to accept the recommendation of the staff with a covenant limiting to your current operation. Any further unreadiness? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Not hearing any?
Dennis recuses.
Dennis recuses himself. Understood.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Heinel has joined.
Good.
And Ms. Panero said she had to step out. I don't know if she's left yet.
So that was first one, that was three zero zero two. I'm going to move to three zero zero four, Mr. Herbst. No, first, Mr. Polo, then Mr. Herbst, then Mr. Warren on three zero zero five. Pull that one up.
Got it. Got it. So this is, you ready for me? This is an office building in Old Wood. I think it was one of the credit union buildings.
Hold on, hold on. Howard, hold on for one second. Guinness, can you put your your device on me? I think it was your device that was causing the feedback. Okay, Mr. Pearl.
This property was purchased about a year ago. It was added to the Hart Road commercial revitalization district because it's a very old office building that they do not believe can be renovated. It's less than a quarter mile from the entrances to six ninety-five. The next closest gas station that they're, you know, the reason they're looking for the BL A S is up past Seminary. This would be the first one that people could get one and off right at that exit and get to it. You know, I believe this is where the commercial behind it is its commercial behind it. There's no residential, you know, pretty much anywhere around it. You know, this has been my statement that I've made, you know, would I hang my hat on? That I believe that we should be renovating properties along the major arteries in our county.
I agree with Mr. Pearl. This is Mr. Herb's side as well for that very same reason. This is right. New York Road. It's a major commercial park, obviously, and this is the type of redevelopment that we want to encourage. So I support the position request.
If it was a restaurant of some kind, it would be allowed. If it was, you know, a gas station, I believe that it would have to go through the special exception and have a public hearing. So I think that, you know, neighbors and all would have another shot to discuss it, but I think that, you know, when you all tell me that the residential is behind one of these sites, you know, I hear you, but this one is sure not, you know, in that classification.
I would concur with what's been said already. And as we all know, residential office or suburban office is kind of a dying thing. And so this isn't helping that. So I would I would concur.
So staff.
Staff did not recommend this. We recommend keeping the existing zoning. Even though the Hebrew Plaza is zoned BL, it is still an office use. If you look right around this area, it is nothing but office uses. We did get letters of opposition from the Orchard Hills Community located across the street and the Green Ridge Community loaded directly behind this. Again, we figured there's gas stations half a block right up the street. There's gas stations down on the other side of the Beltway that again, there's no more needed extra gas stations along York Road.
Well, I disagree with when you say a half a block away. It's all the way up to Seminary, which is, you know, a good distance. The ones that are on the other side of the Beltway are all the way down at Bosley. And only one of those, the other one agreed not to build a gas station on the other side of Bosley. So it's only the Exxon station is the only station coming from Towson, getting onto the expressway.
Tell you what, let's get a motion on the table so we can deal with unreadiness.
Mr. Herbst.
So I approve that this property reason to BL A S two point oh three acres.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, unreadiness.
I've stated my concerns about gas stations. There is another station southward. There's a Shell station. And I just don't see the need for adding more gas stations. The A S part of it, I I don't go for the BL. I wouldn't be too concerned with that. I would be fine. But the A S designation is not something I would be moving on.
The unreadiness.
I have a question. Is does the A S apply to that sort of whole L-shaped property so they could put it anywhere on it? Or is it just applied to the the partial facing York Road? Are those two separate issues?
I believe the property is just the one that's in the green.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Yeah, there's actually three issues in that whole area.
Okay, that was my confusion.
Is this for another Royal Farms?
There's been no discussion that I'm aware of with any of the gas stations at this point.
I I do see that the Greater Timonium Community Council is opposed to this.
Kind of amazing to me. There's no houses to this at all. You can drive a long ways to get to a house on this, so I don't see the residential issue with this at all.
From what I understand, they've been working with the Delaney Valley Improvement Association and working toward a
I mean, I think it's totally insulated from really any of the housing.
Any other unreadiness? We'll call for a vote on this. Seems to be not unanimous perspective on this. So we'll go through a one call vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
About yay.
And as I go down the list, once again, the motion is to modify the zoning to BL A S. One, two point zero three acres. Mr. Schweitzer is a yes. Now. Hartman. Mr. Halapka.
Yes.
Crawford. Versons.
No.
Wilson.
No.
The McGinnis. No, no. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Heidel.
Yes.
Mr. Herbst.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
We could lose my vote.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And we have no Ms. Penaro. All right, that motion passes. We will move to item three zero zero six. Three zero zero six. Pearl, Mr. Herbst, and Mr. Warren. Like to start again, you know what? We'll do a little, we'll change this up, Mr. Pearl, since all of you are done it. We'll start with Mr. Warren on this one.
I'd like, I this was an issue the last zoning cycle, and I supported it. You know, it's already a surface parking lot now surrounded. There is some housing in the back of this, so some kind of buffer probably makes sense. But it's on York Road, adjacent to the property we just approved. There's other multi, you know, there's a eight-story building adjacent to this or whatever that building is, five, six. So yeah, I again, I I don't see why we wouldn't already take land that was designed for commercial and and allow it to be commercial.
Okay, Mr. Herbst, comments?
Yeah, I agree with that. Along the same lines as the last issue. It's some York Road corridor, right? Near the way. I mean, this is the property that be developed and revitalized. And the A A motion may, I understand they want either L C C or BL. We're gonna hear a lot more later this evening about the C C C overlay with potential for mixed use. Talked about that a little bit yesterday for walkable communities. That's something that's gonna come up some more. I don't know. Maybe we can get some clarity on this because the request actually has C C C or BL. So I'm not sure what staffs are on that.
Okay, let's let's hear from Mr. Pearl, and then we'll hear from staff.
Well, I know the building's been there more than forty-two years that I've been in business, and my first office was in this building. So it was in a pretty old building. The owner of this building has invested over five million dollars in renovations for it. It had a lot of vacancies. It had banks that went in and out. It does have a restaurant that's been there for a long time that has really good shadow. The back parking lot is used for parking, but, you know, it is not needed. There's plenty of other parking available on the other levels. There is some discussion with a national daycare facility that I don't know of one in the area with all the office around it. If it continues to stay office, the other stuff across the street and up the road would be nice for people to have something convenient than having to run to pick up children and stuff, you know, that's out of the way for them, if that's the case. I think the C C C district, I believe, has to go through county approvals and all. So people, again, will have their opportunity to voice their comments if that's not what they want to see there. You know, I do think it's a not a good use of a parking deck to just have cars parked on it, you know, at that point. I think that, you know, the county needs revitalization and economic growth. Our taxes are going to go up if we don't find a way to bring other businesses and other kinds of businesses to our county on our major arteries. You know, I think that I have supported Kathy and others when it's out in the valleys or out in granite or whatever else that we don't necessarily need to do it. But on commercial carters, I think it's important that we use the land that we have to grow our county. And we are an old county, and these buildings do need to be renovated substantially. And people are only going to do that if they can, you know, earn something and make a profit on it too.
And again, just to comment on the C C C overlay, like I said, we're gonna hear more about that later. From what I understand, the general concept is a good one, and I think planning, I don't want to put words in their mouths, but planning generally agrees with the idea of having mixed use and walkable communities. And I think here would be a perfect opportunity to to allow for that, to provide for apartments and additional retail dislocation.
Okay, let's hear from staff.
Staff did not support this request. We looked at this. You can see right there that there were two residential, if not three, directly located next to this property on three sides of this property to the north, east, and south. It is all zoned residential. It is almost the commercial zoning creeping into the neighborhood. And even it is used as a parking lot right now. Currently, if they build a, they do get the BL C C C. It is unlimited density. So there's no saying how big of a building that would go next to these smaller residential buildings. Also, the GTCC did not did oppose this. So did the Orchard Hills Community and the Green Ridge Community, which is located right next to this.
So in terms of building size for BL?
Should a decision on this piece of property, and it is a pretty major piece of property, be delayed until the new master plan is developed? Because it may not be compatible with the new master plan.
This is I hate to hold stuff up for four years for a master plan. We should add the master plan before the zoning.
I mean, this this owner bought this property, has taken the effort to begin revitalizing it. And I think you need to give them the opportunity to do that. I see that there are, you know, the houses to the to the east and to the north. I don't see anything to the south. It looks like, you know, trees to me. But and it appears that there is some kind of buffer. And again, you know, let them buffer it that much more if we have to. You know, again, housing is is off of all of our commercial arteries. If you're gonna let every neighborhood say no to all development, as long as they're comfortable, that property taxes are gonna go up. You know, look, our county executive had to find funds, you know, last year to balance our budget, eighty-five, a hundred million dollars. You know, if we continue to say no to growth and economic growth on the carters, you know, it's gonna happen, you know. I know what my tax bill went up this year.
I I'm just want to make sure of a clarification for for me. What is the, there was a Congress, there was a comment from staff that the height could be unlimited with the BL C C C. And I want to be sure I'm hearing that correctly. And is there a different limitation for BL?
It's not the height, it's the density.
Okay, all right.
Doesn't it have to go through various county approvals for C C C?
I have two comments. First of all, it looks
I need an answer to my question.
All right.
I think Joseph was trying to get that answer. And if maybe one of the staff persons, somebody else, either Pete or Jeff can chime in on on the approval process for C C C.
Typically, commercial development goes through a limited exemption, which does not have community input meeting or goes to the administrative law judge. It's usually county agencies reviewing a site plan. I don't believe this area is in a design review panel area that would we're set to go to the design review panel. There is in the BL C C C, an F A R that I think it's four point O, which is still very high. That's a floor area ratio. The BL does have a height ten calculation, which very difficult process to measure the height. Be hard to explain it to you.
But there are some limitations on height on the BL, just as.
It's also limited by the setback.
Yes, you would have some setbacks, and I think what Joe was pointing out, existing on the site, it already is a D R one buffer against the residential uses.
Okay.
Yeah, my my comment would be, I don't mind changing the D R five five five. But could the one as is, so that there is a in-place buffer for the neighborhoods there?
Right. That was going to be one of my comments. I'm not familiar with the prior history of this parcel, but it looks like the D R one buffer was put there to protect the community in the back. And now we're suggesting to remove that. But my other comment was, is this the same owner as issue three dash oh four nine? Looks like awful big parking lot there.
And they could put whatever's proposed for the parcel on the back, leaving parking on three dash oh oh six, which is what's an existing. I mean, there's a lot more space to the west of that parcel that could be used for whatever uses suggested.
I have one comment. This Christina Scott, if I could, if you don't mind. So in relation to three zero four nine, it's an office building, so they need surface parking to allow for the uses within that office building on Huber Plaza. I know the owner took over this building. The building was in awful shape. The prior owner didn't take any care of it, environmental issues, all sorts of things. And the new owner has spent a significant amount of money of really gutting the place and really renovating it and making it cannily a place where tenants want to be. So I don't think we would want to touch with three zero four nine because if we then somehow force him to do additional uses on three zero four nine, that would also require then him to do structured parking, which is just not economical with having a class B office building. You know, you're not getting the rent to support that additional expense. So that's my comment there. On the rear parcel, though, on the three zero zero six, I would support BL on that. I wouldn't support BL CCC. I just don't think that's necessary back there. I think when we we had this four years ago with the CZMP and Wade Koch came in and he actually added that DR one for that purpose. If there's a not a limitation on height, the community owners, the homeowners did come out four years ago and really did oppose this. If we all remember, they talked about lighting and everything shining. They're already having issues right now. So I would support BL. I wouldn't support BL CCC on the issue three zero zero six.
Kathy, I mean, Tina, would you keep the DR one?
I don't know what the limitations are already within, I guess I would ask, planning, what are the original setbacks anyways? If you rezoned all of three zero zero six to BL, what are the setbacks from a residential neighborhood already within the regulations of that? Does anybody know offhand? I guess my point is the setbacks from a residential zone may already be inclusive, which therefore may, the DR one may be a moot point, is my point.
I actually believe, Christina, and somebody can answer this. I'm sure they'll answer it. That DR one is significantly larger than the footprint required for a setback on a standard BL. Looking at that, yeah, it's a, it's a, they they put a more significant setback in.
Yeah, I would agree.
That's a fair assumption, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I should, I move. We support the staff recommendations.
Right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
My second.
And that was Mr. Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Hartman. All right, we're going to move. We're going to move this, we're going to move this motion quickly. And if there, if this fails, we'll move on to the next. So, Mr. Schweitzer.
I agree with the staff recommendation. I say yay.
Okay, Ms. Panero. What you got there? Mr. Hartman.
Yay.
To the staff recommendation?
Yes, agree with staff recommendations, yes.
Halupka?
Yes.
Remind me, staff recommendations?
So make sure you understand, the staff recommendation is to remain, to keep it as it is. DR one and DR five point five, just as you see on that map.
No.
Okay. Ms. Wolfson? Is that, yes? Ms. Wolfson? Kathy?
Yes, yes, with staff recommendations.
Okay, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Heckman?
Yes.
Heinel?
No.
Herbst?
No.
Perlo?
I'll reclusive myself from the vote.
Okay, Mr. Warren?
No.
I'm going to give Ms. Panero one more time. Ms. Panero.
Not, she's left.
Nope, she's still out there. But okay, she's just, she's probably stepped away.
It's her father's eightieth birthday. She's stepping away for.
I got it. Okay, that the staff's recommendation is accepted. Three zero zero six. Moving on then, the three zero zero seven, Mr. Mr., we'll start with Mr. Herbst, but it also, Mr. Warren.
This is one, I had sequestered. I'm actually going to take it off, or at least from my standpoint, take it off of the sequestered list. I don't, I don't know whether there's any, if Mr. Warren did, I guess he'd have to agree. But I, this is, this is a rural area and in in contrary to what we had just discussed, York Road, near six ninety five, this is, this is a little bit more to me, an area that's more more sensitive and I have a preference from the community. And I think that this is probably one that that after reviewing more carefully, should probably stay RC two for now. Let let the the community see if they can work it out with the with the property owner. So I'm I'm not going to push this anymore. I'll remove it from the sequestered list. There's, I would make a motion to keep the staff recommendation.
So let's give Mr. Mr. Warren an opportunity to speak if he wants to speak on this one before the motion.
Yeah, I I, this was a situation that, you know, I I don't understand a lot about these segment businesses or business districts that they're doing. So I guess I was just a little confused and wanted to hear more about that. But I I'll second his recommendation and move on.
So, Mr. Mr. Herbst, you want to make that motion to accept staff recommendations?
So the motion is to make the same recommendation that the staff made, which was to keep the property, the entire property RC two.
Very good. Mr. Mr. Warren?
Second.
Any unreadiness? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Have the same right. Ms. Panero absent. Mr. Heinel, were you out there?
Yeah, I support with the staff recommendation.
Mr. Bear is absent. Just want to make sure we got everybody out there. Okay. We're going to move to three zero zero nine, Mr. Warren. Bring that one up on the screen. That's recommendation.
I I'm sorry, I have my mute on. I apologize. So this is an existing parts depot. Some people would call it a junkyard. They're utilizing this additional space currently for the same use. And they're looking to get it properly zoned. Look around it. There's, there's, you know, more of the same to the back of this. And there's really no, it's farmland all around it. So you know, I think the habit matching the MH makes sense.
So the staff made a recommendation. Can you show us the portion of the parcel that would be MH and the portion of the parcel would remain RC two from staff? And and while you're doing that, the if the staff, go ahead and share its perspective on this parcel.
Jen, would you mind zooming in, please? This is Brown's auto auto parts. Mr. Warren said is currently, it's a, you want to call it a recycling plant. This is to the very rear of it. The staff recommends that we take the the request, the MZA, back to the parcel line that you see splitting down the back here. We want to leave this back portion, the northern parcel, RC two, just to the north of it, is an agricultural field. But it is also easement that the county and the state has funneled money into to buy the development rights off of it. We wanted to leave that kind of as a buffer. So therefore that, you know, that there's any chemicals or other fluids leaking from a car, even if, you know, they were drained, they still leak, they still drip, that they will not run into the field as much as if you could put a car directly into the property line.
Can we put a little buffer there that?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go right ahead.
So that that's that's exactly what we did. If you look at our recommendation, we sort of carried the line where the 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 jog right there happens within the issue and just cared where the existing cars are sort of straight across. That's how we came up with our recommendation. I should mention, and Joe can chime in here, they do have, if you go to the, to the, I guess, right, east of this property, they have a special exception to operate in some of that same area where you see a lot of activity, but it's not zoned MH. Joe can verify that, but I believe they have a special exception to operate on a lot of other land they're not totally utilizing yet. So that was some of our philosophy and rationale as to why we split the, what the what the request was.
Yeah, they have a nonconforming use.
It's a permitted nonconforming use.
Yeah, this is in my neighborhood and I support the the recommendations.
I will, I will rest then. I will support the planning board's recommendations.
Okay, so and it looks like the planning board that you you've have acknowledged, you changed that one, that portion from RC two to MH and then maintain the buffer. So Mr. Warren, you good with the?
Good, I'm good.
Want to make the motion?
I'll, my my motion is to accept planning board's recommendations.
All right.
For the order, it's staff. Can we just say planning staff?
Okay, planning staff's recommendations.
And that was Mr. Warren. Is there a second?
My second.
I think Wilson beat you to the punch. All right, all in favor, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carried. All right, so we're going to move to three zero one zero, three ten. Katie around, you want to jump in?
She's at that birthday party.
So 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 this is what we would do. I'm going to hold that one.
Wait, I I'm here. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry about that. I I unmuted the one and did not mute the other. Can we, I guess, make this larger or I need to be able to be able to point out some things to the north, some zoning to the north.
Okay, do you have another device on? You're coming in a little muffled.
I do not. Am I making the voice? Okay, so if this, there we go, a little bit more. So this is currently vacant. It's only, I think, a little bit more than a acre. It's a small lot and they're asking to go rezoned to ER CCC. It's currently BM CCC. It's consistent with the properties to the north, the business front side zoning. It'll make it more competitive in the market. Again, I mentioned it's vacant. So it it will, you know, give the owner a little bit more leeway when it comes to CC now voting. And I think it it's fitting for the area.
Okay, Mr. Riley?
Sorry about that. The staff recommended to keep this BM CCC. As you can see, there is BR to the north, but directly immediate to the north is CCC. To the south is BM CC and to the west is just BM to the back and MLIM. So we figured that the BR, the BM, there's not a huge difference between the two. The BR without taking three setbacks compared to the BM. So if anything, we believe that the BM would be better suited for the bike on the corner. BR would desire thirty foot setbacks in the road where the BM is from the internal road is just ten feet. And looks like, or I'm trying to read this. Three quarters, so from the straight center line needs three feet for a building setback. So we believe that the BM would be a better suited. We did get two comments for this. GTCC, we opposed the request. They want to keep it BM CCC.
Mr. Riley, could you, could you expand the map out a little bit farther? The map that I had previously seen was was more expanded. Because you've got Target, the very large property, I guess, pretty much right across the street, catty corner. You've got the the fire department, which I think is the OR two. The very large parking lot, if you expand out, that's a target. And I think just about every property north of Target on York Road, again, this is York Road, is the BR CCC. So again, just, you know, it is vacant, just trying to do what we can, what I can to support the businesses. And you'll see that the BR CCC is a little more prominent as you go north.
Are the and I just don't know off the top of my head, the uses for BM CCC versus BR CCC that would make BR CCC more attractive?
Looking at this real quick. BR does allow all the permitted uses in BM. And the uses I have here on the citizens guide isn't really much attractive. It's kennel, greenhouses, lumberyard, printing company, brewery and hotel motel.
Those are the addition, additional.
Those are by right.
By right, okay. Okay, well, Katie, would you like to, is there, well, Katie, would you like to make a motion?
Um, yes, I would. I motion to rezone this property BR CCC.
All right, is there? And that was Mr. Herbst? You've heard the motion, folks? And the second? Any unreadiness?
I'd just like to add that this is, this is a vacant property and it's desperately in need of some facelift and I think this would help a lot.
No unreadiness? We'll do a roll call. No further unreadies, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer?
Nay.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halupka?
No.
Ms. Halford? Ms. Halford? I'm sorry, I need to. Okay, Ms. Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Heckman?
Yes.
Heinel?
Yes.
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Passes, recommendation, BR CCC. Okay, we're going to move on to 3015. This was raised by Mr. Warren.
Yeah, what were?
This is another one of the issues that, you know, we're looking at with trying to revitalize office, space, suburban office. This is a very large office building currently, I believe. And, you know, I think that looking at the ability for them to, to reutilize this property makes sense.
All right, staff? Mr. Riley?
Staff did not support this issue. The reason for this, this is in the heart of the Hunt Valley employment area. This is the location of the CCBC and also Economic Development, Workforce Development Site. Workforce and the economic development, they, they are highly against this issue. They don't, they don't want to lose the MLIM, especially in the heart of the Hunt Valley Community, or the Hunt Valley Employment Center. I do know that the current owner does own the BMI M section right to the, to the north of this. This is the Royal Farms that was constructed. He does own this too. We did speak with him on the phone. He did not have any plans, but we, the Baltimore County did just renew its lease for the CCBC to rent out this building.
All right, so what I'm hearing is the owner wants the BMI M and the tenant, which is the county, wants to keep it as it is.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Warren, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I, I went back and forth on this a bunch and, and they have a lease in place. So, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to change anytime soon. You know, giving, giving him the flexibility again with what I'm, you know, worried about as we, we move forward. I do like the workplace environment of, if the lease wasn't in place, I think I'd be more concerned about it. But at this point, I'm, I'm comfortable recommending that we, we grant them the BM IM on this.
So you, you, your motion?
Motion is to grant them the up, upzoning or change zoning to BMI M.
All right, a second?
Yeah. That was Heinel.
Okay. Folks, you've heard the motion by Mr. Warren. Second by Mr. Heinel. Any unreadiness? Not hearing any unreadiness. I will go through a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Panero?
Yes.
Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halupka?
Yes.
Halford?
Yes.
Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman? There are Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries, recommendation for 3015 is to change the zoning to BMI M. 020 was raised by Mr. Perlow and Mr. Warren. Mr. Perlow? A second to turn my page.
Okay, so this is, of course, the old Marriott, now Delta Hotel. And they'd like to get BM CCC so they can possibly consider using part of the property to, you know, to grow the property. There's no other land uses that are really permitted in the MLIM zone, given the, the way the hotel is laid out. They feel that possibly an apartment project here, right at 83. There's many projects directly across the street. Both apartments and condominiums that were apartments that then were converted would be a good use to the property. There's a lot of people that work in the Hunt Valley area. They would support the retail of Town Center. And it would give some opportunity to try to maximize the property there. There is a lot of parking there, as you can see, and they feel like they could do a better job in their planning of the project.
Staff's comments?
Can I speak here?
Let's go with staff and then we'll have a motion if we're ready. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you have that one? Yeah, go right ahead.
It's only the second time you've done that to me. I, I, I won't take it.
I'm sorry, sir, my, my, my fault.
Just teasing. Thank, thank you, Scott. I, I have to agree, and, and I would just say, I know this area very well because I've worked there in that area a couple of times in my career. It would be great. I, I love how, how the Town Center, the Greenberg Gibbons Project has, has come out of the ground. This could be just such a nice addition to that. There's, there's several towers adjacent to this. And to have, you know, housing and retail and walkability. And as Howard said, this is at a major intersection on 83. I just, I think this is, this is right for that. The hotel is underutilized. It's an old floor plan where it's spread out. You know, it, it, the conference facilities that they, they had put there are just, are just not used properly today. So I think this is just a natural for the CCC. And again, as we've talked, and we've talked a lot about this, trying to get some higher density housing on existing sites makes a whole lot of sense to lower the overall cost of housing. So I'm in support of it.
Okay, all right, staff's perspective? Riley?
Staff did not recommend being approval for this. We, we grip that this area needs further study. There are a lot of residential being built across the street at the Town Center, up off International Drive. There's a couple residential properties being constructed. We looked at this, traffic up here, even though it is not a failing traffic shed. We did look at it. It is horrible if you're up there any time during rush hour, especially at five o'clock. Economic development is also highly against this, just like the other one just down the street there we just did. This is in Hunt Valley. It is MLIM. They don't want to lose the MLIM to commercial uses because if they do get the commercial use, they can go and put any kind of commercial use on top of the ML zone. Not just restricted to adding a residential piece.
Mr. Chairman, I am against this change. I move that we sit staff.
So we've got a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any unreadiness?
Was this, when, when this was opened as a Hunt Valley Inn, was this building designed by Jim Rouse? Was this a Rouse development originally?
That's a good question. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Howard, would you know that?
I don't, you know, I don't remember it being, you know, owned by the Rouse Company even at that point. And it's gone through a couple foreclosures. I think that's part of why there's a need to see some development. The hotel as it's presently built, because it is spread out, as Todd said, really doesn't work, you know, as a ten-story hotel or whatever, like we have a lot of the hotels over on York Road themselves. It's just honestly a waste of a lot of space. You know, it's a two-story, three-story room kind of hotel. You know, there are, I, I do get invited to some weddings in the, in the ballrooms and all. But really not a utilized facility, and that's why it did just two years ago to go through another foreclosure.
I would agree, just, it's, I've gone to a couple of meetings here for some boards in their convention room. And every, honestly, I get off this exit all the time to go to Wegmans or goes to my mother-in-law at the Avalon next to Wegmans. Honestly, I don't even consider it a hotel in the true sense of hotel. It's dark, it's gloomy, it's extremely inefficient for the yield of the total growth acreage it has. Of all the people that, you know, we heard from in opposition, I mean, this one's right at a meeting interchange and, you know, we don't have residential surrounding and it's surrounded by commercial and it's just the worst use of square footage for the total amount of acreage. And I just candidly think the whole thing needs to be redeveloped and they can really maximize and, and the county can benefit for what's all around here. So just like Greenberg Gibbons is across the street, which has turned out to be great. So I would definitely support their request.
I, I'd, I'd have to agree with Tina's, Tina Burzen's comments. I've been out there for conferences and so forth and she's, she's described what, what my feelings are about the place too, from what they are now. And, and it needs, it needs a revitalization. It need, it needs something. There's got to be something to pick that place up because it just, it's just not what it ought to be. And, and it's, unfortunately, it, it's a prime location, although it gets pretty busy out there during the rush hour and so forth, on that, on Shawan Road and so forth. But that's a prime location and it really needs to have, it needs to have a revitalization effort going on there.
It's depressing, to be honest. The whole, the whole thing is depressing and I'm like, it's such a premier location. It's just outright depressing. The whole thing needs to be leveled and redone.
I mean, this, this is what we talk about with Smart Grove. You've got, you know, a major interchange with lots of different weddings on and off of 83. Not that far from the other work areas of the county, Towson, you know, Timonium, wherever it might be. And I think that to give them the opportunity, you're going to find that it's going to not be successful as a hotel again and, you know, continue to go through, you know, foreclosures, problems at that point. You know, there's housing being built for sale across the street. If it does be, if it does end up being apartments that they decide to do and redevelop it, there is, you know, the high-rise kind of hotel, you know, the eight-story kind of Hampton Inns or something like that, and use the rest for, for housing. I think that the millennials question, this is what they want. This is where they want to be walkable to, you know, the mall and whatever else, dinners and, you know, being able to go to Wegmans and all as well. So I think this is really a great location for it.
I think, I think Howard has a great point, but we have to consider that the next two issues we'll be considering are contiguous with this. And together, they're asking for over sixty acres to be upzoned to this BR CCC. So, you know, I just needed to put that out. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. I, I would also like to add that I don't disagree that it's terrible. But I think staff is asking for time to study this parcel and the other parcel next to it. And I believe we should afford the time to do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
My only comment, Kathy, on that is, I don't think the adjacent issue, which is Executive Plaza, they're not asking for the entirety of their site to be the CCC. I think they're only requesting a portion thereof. They're going to keep, they're going to keep all of those office buildings up as they're fully occupied.
And I appreciate that, but I, I'm saying together, there's twenty-one acres on this lot, twenty-five on Executive Plaza and another twelve and a half on Schilling Pepper Lot. And they're all adjacent to each other.
All three issues are asking for the entire property to be zoned BM CCC.
Kathy, I, I only would give you something in our district, you know, Howard Brown's Metro. You know, that's what the people want, is apartments are all written there. It isn't the subway that's got people living there. It's, you know, the library, it's the community, it's, it's just what the millennials, the young twenty-five, thirty-five-year-olds want. They want to be able to where they can shop and eat, you know, mill run. Like I say, I think this is what we need to do in a lot of parts of our county to revitalize them. And like I've said, grow the economic growth. And this is without question to me, a great location for it.
Right, and without moving the hurdle, we need to find ways to increase the housing stock and give people affordability. It's simple supply and demand. If there's higher, a higher supply drives prices down. It's, it's just, it's, we've got to find ways to do that. And if, if you want to move the hurdle, I'd sign up for that, but I don't think that's what people want to do. So this is where we, we have to do this.
Hey Joe, I have in, I have in my notes, I don't have, you said that, and we'll get to this issue, but I thought that only on issue twenty for six point four acres to be the CCC overlay and then the remaining eleven-five will retain, it'll retain the MLIM. I don't see how they're asking for the entirety to be rezoned, the BM CCC. Same thing on issue twenty-one, they're asking for ten point seven five acres to be the BM CCC. And the remaining eleven point six would remain the MLIM. So I don't see where either of these property owners are looking to eliminate the MLIM, which I know is an important code in the county, looking for a portion thereof. So I don't think the prior statements are correct.
According to the home advantage sheets posted on the county, they're both asking for, the first one is twenty-one oh eight, twenty-one point zero eight BM CCC. And three dash zero two one is twenty-five point five nine acres of BM CCC.
Okay, well, we, I've had both owners reach out to me on these two issues and they say that they're not asking for the entirety, so. We need to figure it out, what's right or, you know, because I don't think that's their ask. And I, if we're going to be making a vote on the entirety versus a portion, I think people will probably feel differently if it's just a portion thereof. Because I feel strongly that if the portion that they're requesting, it makes a lot of sense. The entirety is probably a different, you know, feeling.
Tina, I've been contacted as well and I, I have the same information you have.
I, I also have the same information.
So, so the challenge is, they did put in a request.
Right in the middle, Jen.
They did put in a request of, you know, their actual petition for the entire parcel. That is clear, because we have a log of issues in front of us. What it sounds like they're saying to board members and they've communicated to board members is that they would accept something less. Now, had they communicated? is that they would accept something less. Now, had they communicated that to staff? And are there other maps that they have shared with staff? So that you can educate us on what they, how they modified their request? And that's a question for Mr. Wiley, or Mr. Wald, or Mr. Mayhew.
The people that were requesting more housing are taking 83 north to Pennsylvania. You're out there every day. I'm saying that if we're concerned about needing for more housing, take 80s right north. That's where everybody's going.
Well, can I just put in, just to kind of move this along, because I don't think we're going to figure out the answer tonight. I wasn't in support of the whole thing BMCC. I do understand the value of having MLIM. But it did make sense to me for a portion of it, which the information I got was not the entirety. So I would put in a motion, not for what I'm seeing on the screen right now. What I would say is that for the portion that's closest, I would say, to, I guess, the Hill property site, which is the issue 21 for that line, that we would have for issue 20, approximately 6.4 acres zoned to the BMCCC. And then the balance of it would remain the existing zoning of the MLIM.
We have a motion on the floor.
Do have a motion on the floor. So let's do this. We have a motion on the floor to accept staff's recommendations. It was moved by Mr. McGinnis and seconded by Ms. Wilson. We will curtail any further unreadiness. We're going to deal with this motion. And we will do it by roll call vote. So, Mr. Schweitzer, the motion once again, 3020, to accept staff's recommendation. Mr. Schweitzer.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you allow further discussion on the motion?
We've had plenty of time to discuss the motion as the chair. Mr. Pearl, we're going forward. Ms. Panera.
No.
Hartman.
Aye.
Halupka.
Yes.
Hafford.
No.
Miss Bursons.
Yes.
Accept staff's recommendations.
No, Tina, I don't think you want to.
No, I don't want to accept staff's recommendation. It was my motion.
It was not, Ms. Bursons. There was already a motion on the floor for Mr. McGinnis.
No, no.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
The Heinel.
No.
The Herbst.
No.
Mr. Pearlau.
No.
Warren. Mr. Warren.
I'm sorry. No, I had my mute on.
Motion failed. Is there an altered motion?
I would like to put in the motion that I thought I put in, which is to retain the MLIM except for 6.4 acres, which would be rezoned to BMCCC, which would be the portion of the land that's closest to issue 3021.
I second.
So retain MLIM except for, what is the?
6.4 acres, which is adjacent, immediately adjacent and abutting issue 3021.
Tina, do you have some kind of exhibit as to where that 6.4 acres is? Because we can draw that a lot of different ways.
Yes. Can I find it and send it to you? I don't have it like right in front of me. But yes.
Does anyone have this particular dependence in a manner you can send it to Jeff quickly? If not, we'll, um-
I have it. I'll send it now.
So there's a motion by Ms. Bursons. Is there a second?
I second it.
Hold just a moment on the actual vote.
We're waiting. Can I ask a question? So my concern with all of this is I understand the idea of people wanting to have sort of walkable communities, but, but because of the, you know, the Shawan Road, the major layout, on the one hand, you have the light rail relatively close by. But if it's these piecemeal, even the Avalon over there, it's really rather cut off. So my question is, is there any sense of someone trying to do a more of a, I don't know if you want to call it a master plan, but something that if you're going to turn this into more residential, that it's, that it's more cohesive than just plopping down apartment buildings where you couldn't, where there used to be a parking lot?
That's an editorial comment or a question?
That's a question. I mean, it's clearly some people have information on these sites.
You as presenter can- in your email.
Say that again, Jeff.
Hold on one second.
I sent it to you a few minutes ago.
I got it. I just got to get on the screen.
You need to mute that mic, buddy.
There we go.
Tina, I second, I had as well, just so you know. I sent, I sent it to Jeff already.
I could interject, Mr. Chairman, real fast. Some of the things, some of the things that have been said was exactly what the staff took into consideration. This is an employment center. We had long conversations with many of the property owners as well as economic development. And this is an employment area. So there was a concern of the piecemealing of it together. And the thought was, we need to go through a master plan process before we made recommended changes. But I will say that everything that everybody has said was intriguing thoughts that the planning staff took serious consideration into when looking at the ideas behind all of this. Thank you.
I do believe that the Timonium Business Forum is in favor of having more housing in the area because their employees, you know, want to live closer to work.
And the other housing is mostly townhomes.
I believe the Hunt Valley Business Forum supports this as well.
What I just said.
I thought you said Timonium.
Before, when you mentioned about millennials liking walkability, I'll tell you, a lot of us older folks like it too.
We live in Towson.
But my concern is that if we don't have it, have other amended things put in, it's not really walkable. You just have these little pods. I mean, you're not going to cross Shawan Road easily to go to Wegmans.
But Scott, or immediately adjacent to this is you have Hill Management's Development, which is, it has a gym, a daycare in the basement. They have restaurants, Texas Roadhouse. There's a lot of retail amenities in the Hill development right there that candidly, most people probably don't even realize. But it's all immediately adjacent. And when we get to Hill's issue number, they're also requesting a portion of their site as well. They're going to retain all their MLIM for all their office buildings. But within the basement of those office buildings, there's a ton of amenities that will for sure benefit. And candidly, I'm sure that Hill, with its additional density, they'll just add additional amenities to not only support the adjacent zone, but also their own zone when they do, you know, apartments.
Scott, I would also say I worked up there and I walked across Shawan Road to get to Wegmans for lunch all the time. So I mean, it's a lit corner with a walkway. It's not something you wouldn't walk across.
Hill happens to have a little, a little city underneath their building. I mean, there's like a whole, there's a whole segment in the basement of their building that most people don't really know that even exists.
Folks, we have on the screen a diagram which indicates the portion of the parcel that Christina has indicated would be, what are we saying? B?
BMCC.
BMCCC, BMCCC. All right. So we've got a motion on the floor. We now have a diagram. We'll leave it to staff to figure out the, how to map this based on what we have in front of us. I will now go through the roll call vote.
Before, I guess I'm still confused. Is the part that's, is the part that's being read, now the red and green, is that the one that's maintaining the ML or the part that's changing?
Changing. It's the part that's changing.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, what it allows them to do is retain their current square footage without immediately demolishing their building, although I'm sure they're going to eventually redevelop with just how hotels are changing. And then that all back there, if you see that hatch dotted line along the bottom, that's actually an additional parking lot right now. If you were to go to an area that's completely underused and they have no use of it. It actually has a slope downward from the hotel. You have to get to some steps to go down to it. So they're going to utilize that plus the excess land. And then the remainder of it, which candidly is the frontage, which is what everybody sees when they get off Shawan Road, would then remain MLIM.
So they're going to put townhouses back there? Is that the plan?
I didn't hear anything about townhomes. I wish for sure that they would make it multi-family apartment entity.
Would be a tower of some sort?
Yeah, probably similarly with the Avalon did attach-
Four or five stories, probably.
We call for a vote.
Can we, can we get a restatement of the, of the current motion before we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion by Ms. Burson is to retain MLIM except for 6.4 acres adjacent to issue 3021, which would be changed to BLCCC. And that portion is described on the map that we all have in front of us. That is the motion. We had a call for the vote and move forward with the vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
I'm going to say yea on this one.
Yea.
Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halupka.
No.
Hafford. Bursons.
Yes.
Wilson.
No.
McGinnis. Mr. McGinnis. Are you on mute?
No.
Heckman.
No.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Yes.
Pearlau.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And Carretts. That's 3020. We're going to move to 3021.
Tina, you should send them a plat of that as well, if you can, to Jeff.
Say that again.
3021. If you have, let's do this first. Let's go with what we received, the 3021. And if there is a modified, what, and Howard, you want to refer to that, we'll go to that. And let's go to 3021. Based on the issue log, based on the petition.
So I don't have the ability to forward it. I was asking if Tina maybe could send this one as well.
I'm sending it now. Wait a minute.
I sent it.
Jeff is trying to multitask. I'd like to get the original issue map up so that we can review that, Jeff.
Hold on one second.
So while Jeff is doing that, I would think you are the person 421. So you want to go ahead and start while we're waiting for the map to come up?
Howard's on mute.
Got the original map, Jeff?
No, that's the one Tina sent me.
Okay. Please put up the original map. We need to start with the original log issue.
All right. That's going to take a bit.
Herb, I thought I was going to get you to the NFL draft on time.
I said Mr. Herb should watch his second computer and let us know what's going on.
I'm sure they'll have technical difficulties too. It'll take all night.
Well, I have Ray behind me, so we're, we're going to be good.
All right.
Let's just hope we have a season.
Amen to that, Howard.
I think we are testing Mr. Mayhew's skills, his IT skills.
Mr. Chairman, we could look at the present map and I can explain where the area is.
Yeah, I get it, but I want to be consistent, Howard. And we've got, we're not the only ones.
I don't have a discussion with you ever, sir.
We're not the only ones on, you know, we've got other attendees and we want to be fair. So they have an opportunity to see what the original is and where we come up.
Not a problem.
And we're going to have to get back to that anyway, to that screen for 22, 23, 26, 27. I will say this, once we get through the third district, the fourth district is very light.
Thanks, Kath. Mr. Chair, I have to express my concern about this whole I feel like it's, you know, it's a little bit of a master planning on the fly, a little bit of a bait and switch. Staff doesn't even have time to consider the new plans that we're throwing up here. And frankly, I'm not exactly sure. I'm not exactly sure the last one we voted- Um, I'm not exactly sure the last one we voted on the right thing, but um, I just, I just feel like this is a little, little too, um, too sudden. Especially since staff has already asked to, um, have time to study these, all these properties.
And I would agree with Mark. I mean, Steph doesn't even seem to be aware that this request was made.
And, and I will say to, to, to both of you, um, I don't disagree with your points. At the same time, we have a responsibility. These properties were listed on the log. This board has the ability to make its recommendations. We're going to attempt to make these recommendations. Now, we are going to make these recommendations in a democratic process. And that's what we're, we're going through. Um, we never have all of the information that we need or that we would like to have to make these decisions. But I trust that, um, our board collectively will work together, um, to, to make these recommendations.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright, so.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. So we're looking at 3021, which is Executive Plaza. So you want to go ahead and start there first? Mr. Perlo.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what the, what the planning board, uh, planning, uh, department has, to show around the four office buildings there at that point.
That's just what the planning department has. That's what the, the petitioner requested.
I, I agree. Okay, what they're okay with is that the office buildings are staying. Um, they don't have any plans to take them down at this point. They, um, you know, do have all of the amenities in the basement and on the first floor, including banks and things that people want. And if you bring up the next slide, Jeff, now if you can do that, I can show you where they want to um, get the BMCCC so that they can consider whether it's a good idea to build these apartments. So they're pretty much talking about the 10.75 acres. That would be the BMCCC. And then the IM 11.62 would stay as it presently is.
But Howard?
Yes.
If I'm looking at this, this diagram right though, two of the towers are included in the rezoning.
Hmm, I think possibly one is the one to the right of the acres. Um, you know, I don't know the specific plans. Always possible that you could take an office tower and convert it and redo it and turn it into, you know, apartments as well. But the area that they're looking for the BMCC is that area there.
My personal opinion on this, when I got this, because I do know the MLIM is important for employment. And the only reason I was comfortable with the BMCC adjacent, the prior issue and the BMCCC, this issue is, as shown, or at least as originally described to me, um, all the employment would remain. You know, those four office towers are pretty critical for Hunt Valley employment, and there's a ton of employees that go there every day. So I would support this minus the hatched area being on those two tower buildings.
I was under the impression that the four business towers were remaining.
So my, my vote, or my motion, if I could put one in, would be to allow for the BMCCC as hashed, excluding the two office towers that are presently shown on what we're all seeing, that the four office towers would remain within the MLIM zone. And the balance that's hashed as shown would be rezoned to BMCCC.
I'm okay with that.
So, so we.
How do you draw the, the, the buildings out?
You go, you just.
Take, all you do is just take, uh, the line, go out, I would say, like drawing a straight line from the top building. Go all the way out to where the Z is and then be down. And then at the end of the second building, go back in. Match up to that line.
Where your arrow just was.
Yeah, so there, then go back in, yes. And then go down to where the remaining hash is.
So I don't know if we can be precise with this one. I think we've given staff enough that there is a, a, a motion to remove those two buildings from the acreage. The staff will come back to us prior to our final vote. Um, I'm going to advise that we do it that way and allow for staff to give us an updated acreage for our final vote. If that's okay with you, Kathy. But you've got to make the motion. I mean, Christina.
I just, didn't I just make a motion? I don't know the exact acreage, but you want me to make a.
Restate your motion, restate your motion.
Okay, so my motion would be to rezone the portion that we are looking at that is in the hatched area except for the gross acreage underneath the two office building towers that are currently hatched and the immediate surrounding area. So I need staff to draw a line out to the, I don't know, the E in the word rezoned and down and then come back in. I need somebody to measure that. I don't know exactly what that is, but that makes logical sense.
I would agree, and I think we can get the acreage by the May meeting.
You wanted right your line to cut right on the building footprint or in the drive aisle?
I think, take it by the drive aisle because you're going to need to maintain the drive aisles anyways around the building. So go from the drive aisle just slightly to the north of the top building. Follow the drive aisle down and then connect it back into where the hatch line was.
Okay, we can do it.
May, may I ask planning if, um, there will be, uh.
Hold on, hold on one second. Hold on one second. So I think, I want to, because we've got a motion on the floor and I want to just make sure I clarify that emotion. We are rezoning to BMCCC. The portion of the parcel as identified in the diagram that we are now viewing, excluding the two towers. And staff will use the driveline as the, as the, um, really as the demarcation, correct? In essence, is that what you're saying, Christine?
Pretty much.
Alright, so Christina has made a motion. And we're going to rezone BMCCC or the portion of the property as described in the diagram that we have on the screen, excluding the two towers. And staff will use the driveline as the demarcation. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's for now.
So they said that the, so that I understand the towers that we're excluding are the ones that are in the direct east and the southeast. Is that correct?
We're excluding this one, the northwest and the southwest tower from the hatched area.
Oh, okay. Alright, okay.
Okay, is, you've got a motion on the floor from Ms. Burson, seconded by Ms. Panero. We've already shared the motion. Is there any unreadiness at this point?
Is there adequate parking per code remaining for those all four office buildings? Total footage of all those office buildings, if it's rezoned this way?
Well, it's my understanding if they never build anything, they have plenty of surface parking as they do right now. If they increase the density and therefore the use changes, there's going to be a parking calculation done by and approved by the Baltimore County for the development plan they will come in. And perhaps they would have to then include some structure parking in order to make sure they both satisfy the office parking house, but also a residential. But remember, you always have that change in time, right? Because you have people that are leaving the apartments to go to work and then you have people that are at the office building. So there's that whole combined calculation. But nonetheless, it would be completely approved by planning department in order for them to get a building permit.
Unreadiness.
Knowing that area, there's tons of parking too. There's plenty of excess parking.
Well, that'll be taken care of, like, in the development plan, like Tina said.
Any, any other ready? Call for the vote. Do a roll call. Once again, the motion is to rezone to BMCCC, the portion of the requested, um, for, for the portion as outlined in the diagram, excluding the two towers. Staff to create the demarcation during the driving line. If we're talking about the northwest and the southwest towers. Mr. Schweitzer.
Alright, nay.
Nay. Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman.
Nay.
Mr. Halopka.
No.
Ms. Hafford.
Nay.
Bursons.
Yes.
Wilson.
Nay.
McGinnis.
Nay.
The Heckman.
No.
The Heinel. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Herbst.
Yes.
Mr. Perlo. Mr. Perlo.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes, and if I could just mention one thing, I sequestered this and didn't get to speak. Not, not that I'm that important, but this happened like the fourth time now, so just.
I gotta be, I gotta be more on top of this. I'm sorry, Mr. Warren.
That's okay.
But you gotta stop me way before this, but okay, okay. Stop me, stop me. Alright. Wow, so let me, let me ask this one more time. Is Mr. Heinel on the line? Mr. Heinel is not on the line. Alright, so this is one of these rare occasions. I've got six yays, six nays. I am going to vote nay. We need an alternate uh, um, an alternate motion.
I move to accept the, uh, staff recommendation.
Second.
Alright, who was, who was that that moved?
Hartman.
And was that Wilson that came in next?
Sure. I think it was a tie. Somebody else said second too.
Alright. Alright. Um, any, any unreadiness on acceptance?
Um, I would just say, if there's one thing of all the things that we're rezoning, it's completely surrounded by nothing but high-rise. We just approved this exact zoning for the adjacent. So I think this is completely silly that this one wouldn't pass through when we're retaining the MLIM or we're keeping all the employment. We've just talked about how it's important for BMCC, for the adjacent, to be able to have walkability to amenities. We're retaining that in the four office buildings. There's a Texas Roadhouse right here. Why we wouldn't treat this one exactly like we did the other one makes no logical sense. So that's my unreadiness.
And that's fair. Look, so this one, let me, let me do this because I, I really am in a position where, um, I am casting a vote. And so I guess you guys need to hear from me on my, on my position on this one. Um, I am not really crazy, um, about the fact that the staff did not, was not aware of, um, this desire to make some modification to the request. So for me, part of this was about process. Um, the, the other piece to this that concerns me a little bit is that, um, we have not, uh, I think, given staff the opportunity to think through what the best use is for this particular property. And I, and I am, you know, I don't always agree with staff. So I don't want anybody to think that, you know, my thought is just go with staff. But I am concerned that this did not, um, this was not handled well. That's my perspective.
I'd like to comment on what you just said, uh, Scott. Um, because Mark Hackman, uh, Mr. Hackman made the same comment a little while ago about basically, and I don't, and I don't mean to say that some of the things that have been suggested aren't the right ways to go, but, um, we're kind of some, in, in some ways doing rezoning on the fly here and not giving the zoning, zoning staff or this planning staff, uh, oper, uh, legitimate opportunity to, to, to analyze and discern, discern what, what's, what's being suggested. Not that they aren't great ideas, and I, and I certainly wouldn't suggest that they aren't, but, uh, I totally agree with you. And I, so that I, I would, I would, uh, say nay on a, any changes to what the planning staff has said or has already suggested and give them time to make, to make an adequate review of what we've, what we've talked about.
And just note, I think the fact that we've had this discussion and I think it's been a healthy discussion. Um, there will be an opportunity for the council persons to review this again. Um, but that was a principal vote on my behalf. Alright. There is a motion, uh, Mr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Wilson, to accept the staff's recommendations. I heard some unreadiness. Is there any further unreadiness or can we take this to a vote and it will be a roll call?
Yeah, I, I, I think that I would have rezoned the whole thing, uh, BMCC, simply for the fact that what we've talked about, if I would have had a chance to speak first, this is next to a light rail. There's tons of shopping and other amenities there. And we need to get higher density uses for people to live in, to get the overall cost of housing down. If we can't develop the farm land, people need to have a place to live that they want to live. All we hear about is putting low-income housing or affordable housing over in Randallstown and Catonsville. Th- this is an opportunity to put apartments in that where people can live and get the benefit of that area. And I just, I think it's a shame that we don't do that.
I, I worked in Hunt Valley from 76 through about 95, and so I'm familiar with the area. And in particular, these properties were there. And I, I agree that this is a prime location for adding housing, like the Avalon over by the mall. Uh, I just, I don't like it being done in an ad hoc fashion, willy-nilly. I think it needs a lot more planning and I think the, uh, And I think the master plan twenty thirty ought to address this issue. I think these properties should be redeveloped with the housing. And I just think this is the wrong way to do it.
And I'm okay with your thoughts there, but if I could just say one thing, I've heard a lot of people talk about the twenty twenty plan or twenty thirty plan, whatever it is. Why didn't you do that plan before we did zoning? That's my big issue. If you're going to say hole up somebody for four years, because we should have done the plan before that. I agree with that a hundred percent. We should do a little comprehensive plan, eliminate the hurdle, build nice park areas in the county. I'm for all that. I'd love to do that. But that's not going to happen. So we got to deal with what we have to deal with. And that's the fact that we need more affordable housing. We need to have workforce housing. It's simple economics. If a person makes fifty thousand dollars a year, they can afford a two hundred thousand dollar house. Can't build two hundred thousand dollar houses in this area. And that's just a simple fact. So they're going to be apartments for the most part.
Any further comments? I don't want to curtail comments, any further comments? Let's take this to a vote. Mr. Schweitzer, this is a motion to accept the staff's recommendations, moved by Mr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Mr. Schweitzer.
I accept staff recommendations, yes.
Panero.
No.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halapka.
Yes.
Ms. Halford.
No.
Ms. Burzens.
No.
Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Wait a minute, hold on a second. Something wrong here. Okay, Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Heinel.
No.
Herbst. Mr. Herbst, are we already at the watching football? Mr. Perlow. Okay, Mr. Perlow.
No.
Warren.
No.
We're going to have a hard time with this one.
Yep.
Right, so that motion fails. All right.
I make a motion to accept the Burzens motion earlier.
Figure out how that's going to change.
Heinel's back.
Mr. Heinel's back.
Yes, I'm back. Had to put my kids to bed. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right.
Can you take two bites at the same apple doing this?
Good question.
Ooh, that's a good question. That's a Robert's Rules question and I'm not, I don't have the answer for right this second. I believe the answer is yes. Actually, I do believe the answer is yes.
I would agree. I do believe you can.
My other motion would be to do the whole property, so you choose.
You'd have to have a motion reconsider.
Well, I'd like to, can I re-put in my motion? Because I thought it was a fair and reasonable motion while still maintaining the vast majority of the property and all office buildings still can maintaining the MLIM zone and not, I'm not in support of changing the entirety to BMCCC.
So Christina, you've got the floor. Restate your motion and we will move forward. This is, and I think Mr. McGinnis is right. You'd like to reconsider, you'd like for the board to reconsider your motion.
Can I just say that? So I need to restate it.
You got it.
Or to reconsider my motion earlier.
All right, Ms. Burzens is asked for reconsideration of our motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Panero, a second. At this point, I think we've had more than enough opportunity to speak our positions. I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
Well, this time I'm going to vote yea.
Okay, Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman.
Nay.
Halapka.
No.
Ms. Halford.
Yes.
Yes.
Wilson.
No.
McGinnis.
No.
Heckman.
No.
Heinel.
Yes.
Herbst. Yes.
Mr. Perlow.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Heinel, you did say yes, correct?
Yes, I said yes.
That motion carries. Democratic process. Comes on. All right, three zero two two. Mr. Warren. Three zero two two, eat yours.
I'm not going to restate all of what I said. It's consistent with what I said.
The same situation, right?
Yeah.
Two two?
Three zero two two. You can put that up on the board. Is that in the same district, I mean, in the same?
Different type of issue.
Okay, then we need to hear your position, Mr.
Let me look up. I thought it was the same one. I apologize.
Todd, I think you're talking about two three.
Okay.
Two three is right in the same area.
Sorry, guys, I'm trying to use three devices to get all my notes. Hold on.
Roll, kneel, his, close, yeah.
Can I just see the issue and then I might be?
He's pulling it up. This is a MLIM to BLAS, another gas station.
Yeah, I guess what I thought was this is adjacent to railroad tracks. It was I'm trying to find my notes. Staff, can you do your thing and then I'll come in? I'm trying to get.
Staff could go ahead.
Staff did not recommend the change. Jen, if you can zoom out. It's almost a kind of a finger of commercial going into the MLIM zone. We kind of just wanted to keep that. There's kind of a distinct line up York Road where the commercial is. And we felt that this was an intrusion back into the MLIM. Again, economic development was supportive of that. Of our stance, I'm sorry, rephrase that.
One here today.
Yeah, I just found my notes. I apologize. I did think I was talking about two, three. Yeah, again, I just thought that, you know, was, I, it goes back to what we talked about, giving people the ability to put nice service centers in for the community. It's a business and community group. I'm not that wet on this at this point. I guess I'm wore out. I'm just gonna, I'll make the motion to accept staff recommendations.
Right, you've got a motion to accept staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Wilson. Any unreadiness?
Can I ask a question?
Question?
Where is York Road where the BLAS letters are?
York Road is to the east, correct, Mr. Wally?
Yes, it is right where the BLAS is.
Okay, I just want to make a comment and then you all can vote and I don't have such a major issue. But don't always think that BLAS is going to be for a gas station. It can also be for a dealership. It can be for a repair shop. It can be for, you know, Heritage has a beautiful Toyota service department that's off of Painters Mill Road. You know, so it's not, I don't, I wouldn't think that YW Royal Farms that we've talked about so much is going to build something off of the road back in an ML area. But somebody might want to do something else in the future. That could be a major improvement to what I'm seeing there that looks like a dirt field, you know, with a building in the back with some cars out there. So just don't always think that a BLAS means oh, it's a gas station. I'm going to say.
Very fair statement, Mr. Perlow, and I would take that absolutely understood.
And Howard? To your point, the building just to the north, just above it, placed according to the ghoul, it's the Hunt Valley Auto Body.
I mean, you know, right by the BJ's in Owings Mills is just a beautiful facility that Heritage has for service, for bodywork, whatever, actually storage of some of their cars on a nice parking lot where they put their new cars that they haven't sold. So just remember that it's not always a gas station. I don't think anybody would build a gas station there.
Howard, I agree. I just ran out of steam, so I just.
I like you running out of steam.
Actually, I actually agree with Howard on this one too.
Okay, I mean, I don't know who the owner is, so I can't, you know, support it. I've not been contacted. I'm happy to give staff recommendations and I'll have to come back and try to convince us of a reason, but, you know.
So any other unreadiness? So a motion by Mr. Warren and seconded by Ms. Wilson is to accept the recommendation of the staff to retain the zoning as MLIM. I will go through this as roll call vote because it sounds like we've got some reservation. Mr. Schweitzer.
I vote yea.
Ms. Panero.
Yay.
Hartman, Mr. Hartman.
Yay.
Halapka.
Yes.
Halford.
Yes.
Burzens.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Heckman. Heinel.
No.
Your Herbst.
Yes.
Is that me?
Mr. Perlow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
I'll vote against my motion.
All right, look, the motion carries, three zero two two. Appreciate moving it along. All right, so three zero two three is the other issue and we'll start with Mr. Warren, then Ms. Panero, and then, yeah, Mr. Warren and Ms. Panero, both of them sequestered deciding.
Todd, he didn't forget you today.
Forget me on this one.
You were my guy. You're my guy, Todd, so you know. Blame it on my head and not my heart.
Again, I do, for expedience, this is adjacent to the light rail. Lots of resident or retail for these people to shop. Walkability, there's commercial there for them to also go to offices. It just, you know, commercial suburban commercial office is in a decline. So, you know, we're going to have to come up with a plan. I think this gives them the ability to keep some office there, add some retail, give people walkability. And for the ninth millionth time in my eight years on the board, we need to get more affordable housing and increase simple economics, increase the supply. If, you know, we'll lower the price because demand can't keep up with that. So it's when it's inverted and demand is greater than supply, then prices go up, so.
Right, staff? Nope, not before staff, I'm sorry. Well, I'm getting tired too, guys. I'm sorry. Ms. Panero.
Yep, I'll just add very quickly to what Todd said. It's a very large outdated, single story office building that desperately will need to be redeveloped once the tenants vacate it. This will build off of the commercial success all along Schilling and the Hunt Valley corridor. Just to the north, the south of the building on Schilling, I believe is a light rail station or the light rail. It just makes perfect sense to upzone a property like this in this area.
Okay, staff's position on this one?
Again, you know, just like with three dot zero two zero and three dot zero two one, we believe this area just needs further study. Again, the request that came in is for the entire property to go to BMCCC, I believe. Again, you're losing the ML zone, the MLIM, that Department of Economic Workforce Development, they are highly against this, losing the MLIM. This could eventually go to one hundred percent commercial. It is going to a D zone and it's no longer in the industrial zones.
The MLIM doesn't, with everything that's going around from what I know of Hunt Valley, and I often go there prior to six weeks ago, MLIM just simply isn't the highest or best use for this property, in my opinion.
The BM allows for the office anyway, so it's again, the reason you're doing the CCC is to give you the ability to add residential on top of the commercial uses, so. Again, it's, you know, I think personally every shopping center in the county should look at this as an option. It just makes sense.
It just provides very much needed flexibility for the owner.
Yeah, this building has, you know, I know this building, again, working in Hunt Valley, and if you look in, I mean, there's a ton of offices in the center of this with no windows. It's just not going to fly today. This isn't something that when that user, which is a large insurance company, if I remember correctly, working up there, if they exit that building, it's going to set vacant.
Well, and you have, they already have Avalons over there attached to the mall that they have. And Avalon's coming over here into Towson. Mixed juice is very, very good.
All right, Mr. Warren, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion that we upzone or change the zoning to I don't know if this is considered an upzoning, but change the zoning to BM CCC.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Warren, Ms. Panero. And is there any unreadiness? Additional unreadiness?
I'll just say in support of Mr. Warren that this building originally, I believe, was a Westinghouse building. If that gives you any indication of the style of building, it is very.
Yeah, it looks like a big old box is what it looks like.
All right, any other unreadiness, any comments? We'll go to a vote. The motion by Mr. Warren, seconded by Ms. Panero is to change the zoning to BMCCC for the entire parcel. Mr. Schweitzer.
I vote yea.
Panero.
Yay.
Hartman.
Nay.
Halapka.
Yes.
Ms. Halford.
Yes.
Ms. Burzens.
Halapstein.
Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Heckman?
Yes.
Your Heinold?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Zero two six, Mr. Perlo?
Well, same discussions we've had. This is a shopping center that they'd like the ability to live where you work and have some housing built there. You know, it is absolutely what we talk about with smart growth. That's the purpose of it. You know, if I had spoken the last, on the last building, I understand economic development would like to keep the manufacturing jobs and the, the jobs in the area. But, you know, think about an awful lot of buildings that you have now in Towson where you might have offices on the first three or four or five floors and then, you know, apartments, housing above them at that point. Um, we don't have the, the land available in our county to spread out and build townhouses or single family anymore. There just is not a lot of land left anywhere in our county. Where does it mean that you end up going? And that means up. You know, it's what Bethesda is, it's Rockville is, it's what Columbia has become. Um, Columbia is totally reinventing itself, you know, by building, rebuilding the part of Columbia and adding these residential projects to the retail centers throughout the original town of Columbia, not just in town center, but Village of Wild Lake and, you know, three or four other projects already. Um, this is the future of retail and housing, um, you know, in the, in the dense areas of the East Coast and the West Coast of America. So I'm in favor of it here and it's a long and major thoroughfare. You know, I really believe that it's a, a proper use for the project.
I want to chime in about a letter I got from the Hunt Valley Business Forum. And that's a large business group up there in Hunt Valley and they're against the request for, um, the zoning change.
Against it?
They're against it.
Why would they be against it?
I think they like, I, I'm assuming they want the staff's recommendation, but they, I, I don't know. I mean, they just sent it to me at like five o'clock this afternoon.
What I understand on this, the, the petitioner is, um, okay with the staff recommendation. They can, they can do what they need to do with the nine point four four acres.
So I think that's what they would agree to. I don't want to take, take my word. They just said they're against the requested zoning change.
Yeah, the RC six in the back, I believe, is what those, uh, planning department said should, should remain, but then the BR should, should be upzoned.
So I'm recommending or suggesting we go with the staff recommendation on this one.
I would agree.
I will agree and make a motion to that effect.
Can I, can I ask, what, what, does that give them the ability to do the? So what is, what's the staff recommendations? I've lost it at this point.
Nine and a half, nine point four four acres of BR CCC.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So, so how your motion was to accept the staff's recommendation?
Recommendation of BR CCC for nine point four four.
And I'll second it.
Okay, let, let me make sure we're clear. We're accepting the staff's recommendation. That's, that's recommendation is BR CCC for nine point four four and RC six for three point three one.
That's correct.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren, you second that motion? Ready this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, move on to three zero two seven. We can bring three zero two seven up. Three zero two seven is twenty one fifty nine York Road, the Timonium Shopping Center Associates. Is the petition.
Trying to find my notes again. Same, same as the existing issues. These are all CCCs. Old shopping centers that, you know, we can then up, we can upzone and this is across from the, from the fairgrounds. It's right off Cordonia, right off the exit. Uh, it's walking distance to the light rail. Again, it's, it's exactly what we should try to be doing to lower the overall cost of housing and give people what they want, the ability to shop. It's got a vibrant giant in there. They got, there's a Starbucks, there's a Panera Bread. I go to the shopping center all the time. This, this is a perfect place to put multiple layers of house above it, so. I'm not going to beat it up any more than that, other than say that that's my position on it.
Staff's position?
I think people need to be reminded that every time you change commercial to residential, you're going from a tax-paying entity to a tax-draining entity. And I think there's only one person that is going to have the final vote on this, that is the councilperson representing this area who represents the people, and they're the only people that are being voted on by the people living there. And they're not going to support all of this zoning on about every property that comes up.
Wayne, I understand your point, but this isn't changing it from commercial to residential. This is commercial. It's just giving them the ability to put residential on top of it or actually increase their tax base.
It doesn't increase your tax base. It costs you money.
All right, Scott, are we allowed to do, uh, unreadiness?
Yes.
Well, I need a motion. And I'm, and I'm, Mr. Mr. Warren, can?
I, I'll make the motion to provide, uh, BM CCC on twenty four point nine four acres. Uh, it looks like there's some buffer of five point five, a point oh four, and some RO of point two.
I'll second that.
Motion is second by Mr. Hurst. Now unreadiness?
So you'll see me out here picketing this if this gets rezoned. Unlike the other ones, by the way, I championed as prior issues, which were BM CCC. If you also remember, on all those, it was a portion of it and it was not messing with any of the existing structures. Here, they're asking for an overlay of the entire center. We have Timonium Fairgrounds across the street, which who knows, they've been talking about what the state's going to do with that, about redevelopment. If there is something that we should not be overlaying the CCC, it's this. This is one of the largest properties, Timonium Elementary, Ridgely Middle, Delaney High School. This is the zone for this. Everything's completely overcrowded, trailers everywhere, and there's just no way that this area can handle any more residential as it is. And so I am so opposed to this issue and I am a very firm no on doing this, and this is something that definitely needs to go into the master plan and figure out what's going on with this area, what's going on with schools, traffic. I mean, it's a slew of issues of why we shouldn't be overlaying the CCC.
Well said, Tina.
Okay, any other unreadiness? No, no, no further unreadiness. We focus to a vote. The motion by Mr. Warren is to change the zoning to BM CCC on twenty four point nine four acres, DR five point five on point oh four acres, and RO on point oh two acres. Um, Mr. Schweitzer?
I vote nay.
Panero?
I vote yea.
Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halopka?
Yes.
Ms. Halford?
No.
Burzens?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Heinold?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Perlo?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Passes. Okay, we're going to move to three zero two eight, eight, three zero two eight, eight. Mr. Perlo?
Okay. This piece is adjacent to the Kia dealership that wants to expand their footprint to be able to display more automobiles outside, not in their dealership, not to build a building. The present uh, use of the property is an old dry cleaners, always worry about environmental there, too. They want the ability to expand, um, you know, their sale of the, of automobiles or the Kia product line at that point. The client, um, people that want to buy the property have it under contract, have met with, uh, Lutherville Community, Eric Rackle, and have agreed that, uh, you know, they'll try to screen it, fence it, landscape it, and pay attention to the lighting issues that sometimes are there. Um, I would suggest that, you know, we give them the BM that they were looking for. Um, you know, if there's a need for a covenant that Lutherville and the neighboring people agree to, you know, at that point, I guess I'd be okay with that. But I think it makes sense again to let them, you know, um, expand their business again along the commercial corridor.
Okay.
He just said that this, this is a, um, I saw this property, it's this dilapidated structure, and if they are able to get this zoning, they'll be able to, um, tear it down and build a brand new structure and correct a major problem over there. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay, staff's position? Mr. Wally?
Staff does not recommend the change. They wanted to keep the existing zoning. Uh, this area is subject to a lot of community plans. You have the community conservation plan for Lutherville, Hunt Valley, Timonium Master Plan, and of course, the two bike and pet plans. Excuse me. Uh, we, we did not say it because it's right on the entrance to Bellona, which is kind of the entrance to historic Lutherville, Timonium. We wanted to keep that, maybe to find a better use than just storing cars there. And was the wrong zone for this area.
Okay. Mr. Perlo? Would you like to make a motion on three zero two eight?
I'd make a motion that, um, we have, we set the zoning at BM for forty four eight acres and RO for point oh, oh two acres. Total of a half an acre.
But did you say with a covenant?
Yeah, can we, can we put the covenant in there?
With the agreement that they negotiated covenant with the Lutherville Association.
That was Mr. Perlo who seconded?
I'll second it.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes, sir.
You first the, uh, motion and second. Um, we'll roll call.
I have, I have some unreadiness.
Readiness, thank you. Unreadiness?
I'm confused as to why they need BM there because it looks like the dealership itself is BL. So what are they looking to do on this property that they can't do?
No, I believe that they're BRAS.
Yeah.
Right now it's BRAF?
It's the property to the north.
Okay, well, we're on three dash oh two eight.
On oh two eight, and that is.
This zoning is BL.
It's BL.
And, and so I don't, you know, the dealership itself is BL, then why?
Dealership is not BL.
It's not. You're looking at the wrong property.
BRAF.
BRAF, that's the dealership.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I'm, I'm confused. I thought it was the one in the south.
No.
Which is the zoning that they're asking for.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
So, so let's take a roll, unless there's any other unreadiness? All right, Mr. Schweitzer?
Nay.
Panero? Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Halopka?
Yes.
Ms. Halford?
Yes.
Ms. Burzens?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Heinold?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Perlo?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Okay, motion passes. Accepting the, uh, requested zoning with a covenant with the negotiate a covenant with the community. Three zero three two, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
This is a, uh, commercial type property where they, was in the, uh, the fire station, when they combined, it became abandoned and property contains a large commercial building, large, two, two bays for trucks, um, about a couple acres of paved surface. And, uh, there were a lot of, uh, covenants that were agreed to by the supposed purchaser that never, I believe, I would, never got to the community association. Now, there's a disagreement on the, how the property should be developed. However, I think there's room for negotiation between the community and potential buyers. And I think this is one of those tough ones, but I think it can be worked out some way with the councilman. So that's, that's what I have to say on it.
And the staff has recommended it remain the same?
Wayne, what's your suggestion?
Well, it, it has to be a, a commercial zoning of, of some sort because it's just not, uh, going to remain. It's, it's like I described it. It's a large building there, a large, uh, surface area, and I did talk to Joe Wiley, um, today about it. And, uh, there is some, uh, potential that the staff may recommend, but I think it's going to be negotiated to begin with. I don't have an answer.
The staff gotten any feedback? The staff gotten any feedback since you made your recommendation that would give you some reason to modify your recommendation? Mr. Wiley, have you gotten any additional information?
I'm sorry, I do have here that we did receive one hundred and sixty-eight comments for this issue, one hundred and sixty opposed to the zoning request, and only eight for the zoning request.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this particular issue? If not, I'm hoping that someone will offer a motion on our action for three zero three two. Wayne, I would normally turn to you, but it doesn't sound like you have a specific request for this.
A BL or something else would be probably more appropriate for it. There are three different parcels on this property, and I think that one property, it's got to go commercial somehow or another. They've even offered to use the indoor facilities for the community to use as they have been using. I think, again, I just think it's something that's going to be worked out between the councilman and the commercial and the community.
I'll make a motion to make the whole parcel BL.
All right, we've got Mr. Warren making a motion to make the parcel BL. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Heino?
Yes.
You've got a motion on the floor. Is there any unreadiness? Not hearing any unreadiness. We'll go to a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer.
I vote yes on the recommendation or on the motion.
Okay, Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halopka.
Yes.
Miss Halford.
Yes.
Burzens.
Yes.
Wilson. Miss Wilson. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yay.
No, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
That was a name, is? Okay, Mr. Heino.
Yes.
Hurst.
Yeah.
Mr. Perlo. Mr. Perlo.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Recommendation, BL, three zero three two, three zero three four, and this is the last one in District Four, Ms. Burzens and Mr. Warren. We'll go with ladies first.
This was one that, I, I guess I'll make a general statement about this whole CZMP process. I think when I first got on the board, when I realized, or even before then, when I was working for a developer, when I realized that any, anybody can upzone your property or downzone your property without getting owner's approval, it's just, it seems like a disregard of an owner's properties, right? So the whole reason I pulled this one is the property is currently zoned BLCR, and right now it's in for a downzoning. And the owner has plans to redevelop the property, isn't requesting a new zone change, but it needs to remain BLCR, or they won't be able to do with it what they are already permitted to do by right. And the recommendation is for a downzoning. And my understanding is that they're gonna go in to develop this for Starbucks and someone who enjoys her Starbucks, I think it would be a great addition from what's there. It's kind of a dilapidated barn, kind of like a mishmash of things. But nonetheless, they're not looking for an upzone, but they just don't want it to be downzoned. And as a person who own property, I would agree with them. So the motion I'll put in is for this property to remain the zone that it is and for it not to be downzoned.
So just, just before the motion, staff's position? Hold it, hold it, before staff's position, Mr. Warren.
I was gonna let you get away with it one more time.
Getting away with it.
For Scott. I, I think she said it perfectly, seizing people's land is, is right. So downzoning somebody's property, taking their, their property away from them is, is, is so I, I, I have a very difficult time with that. It'd have to be for a special reason that I would even consider that. And this isn't one, this, this is obviously fits the area. So if you want some, I love Starbucks too, so I will second her motion.
And, and to add to that real quick, this is a project that's already underway and the owner has spent, or the developer rather, has spent a considerable amount of time and money in, in already processing a development plan. To pull the rug out from under them and to change the rules in the middle of the game is, is really not fair, even more so than, than just in general terms, like Mr. Warren mentioned. There'll be plenty of time during the development process for various issues to be ironed out and for more community input. But doing this now and changing the zoning in the middle of a project is not the right thing to do.
And I would agree, and I am not usually in favor of upzone, or, you know, more dense zoning or more intense zoning, but changing the rules is definitely not fair in the middle of a project.
Can you go out a little bit?
Yeah, I, I wanted to see what's around it too.
It's four corners.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
It's, it's all commercial. It's all commercial along the four corners.
All right, is there comment from staff as to why? You're.
This issue was submitted by the councilman. There was a concept plan, I believe, for this property that it wasn't just a Starbucks. It was two, as they put it, two fast food restaurants with, including drive-throughs that were proposed for this site. There are huge environmental issues out here, as I miss everybody should know. This is on well and septic. We met with the shopping center, which is located right next door. According to them, they import most of their water because the water table is so low out there. And this, there's, the state is out here monitoring wells constantly. I believe Jarrettsville is a scenic pike, scenic road, if I'm not mistaken. We just felt that the downzone would, is more acceptable, given all the brand new issues that have come up over the past couple of years.
Well, a couple of comments. My understanding is that the owner already has worked with depths on this. To your point, they're not going to do two fast foods. They are going to do a Starbucks. They're not going to do two fast foods because of, they also had already worked with the community. So there is going to be a Starbucks on this site.
Are you going to have to bring your own water?
I like my free water at Starbucks.
Oh my lord, that was good.
I like my free filtered water. All right, so.
Then problem, but they'll figure it out if they want a Starbucks.
Any, so there, is there a motion?
I would put a motion to retain the zone classification of BLCR.
I second that.
Retain, retain classification. Burzen and Warren. Any further unreadiness? Not hearing any, we'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
I vote yes on this one.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halopka.
Yes.
Miss Halford.
Yes.
Miss Burzens.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Heino.
Yes.
Hurst.
Yes.
Hello.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes, and Burles, number one to Cincinnati.
All right, thank you for the update. And, and you know what? This is the first time that I bet wrong. I thought we might have at least one nay. Usually when I get the roll calls and get it right, there's at least some, somebody that is contrary. But on that one, you all voted yes. Thank you. Okay.
Everybody loves coffee.
Everybody loves.
Leaving us into submission.
All right. Hey, guys, we've got, let me, let me do a, a temperature check. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six left, and they're all in District Four. Are we good with just pressing on?
I vote yes.
Yes.
Second.
Keep going.
We're gonna press on. So before we begin District Four, let me indicate the items that have been sequestered, and I'll look for a motion from Ms. Nancy Halford. Items in sequestered for District Four are four, zero, zero, seven, four, zero, zero, eight, four, zero, one, zero, four, zero, one, four, four, zero, one, six, and four, zero, one, seven. Ms. Halford.
I move to accept the recommendations of the Baltimore County Planning Board staff for the logs of issues in District Four, except for the sequestered items listed by Chairman Phillips.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm not sure who that was on the second.
A deep voice, so. Remember your time.
I'll pick Mr. Warren on that one. I just trust it was. All in favor, please say aye. Both have the same right, motion carries. All right, let's go through these folks. And these are Kathy, so I know she's well prepared. Four, zero, zero, seven, actually, this is Mr. Hurst. And I believe Kathy Wilson also has a comment on this. Four, zero, zero, seven. Pull that one up.
So sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll start on this one. Initially, the petitioner requested OR two on the entire four point one eight acres. It's currently MLR, and I, I think that there's a compromise here of DR five, five. OR two would allow residential density at, at ten point five. The five, five, in my view, is a, is a middle ground. I, from what I understand, the petitioner can live with that. It will allow them to build townhomes. There are townhomes, if you look to the south of the property directly across the street, it is DR five, five, so direct, directly down other side of the street. And if you look at a map a little bit further, there's a townhome community there on the other side of the street. So in keeping with, with the rest of the community, the five, right, right there, that clay court, I think it's called. That's a townhome community, so they, that's what they'd like, the opportunity to be able to build. And initially put in OR two, again, that was probably a little bit too much density, so the five, five would, would work in my view.
Miss Wilson?
If, if you could please expand that view some, so we can get a better picture of the total, the area surrounding this lot. I would like to make the correction that the petitioner is dead. So, you know, he, he is not going to be living with it, the residents are. This, we, the, the community associations have requested that this be downzoned to three point five. They could live with that. As you can see, it is to the, to the west, it's all rural and all, except for the golf courses, there's Diamond Ridge, and the woodlands are there, if you could expand that a little more. And I guess it was two thousand, both four dash zero, zero, seven and the MLR lot to the east of that were upzoned in another case of aspirational zoning, like the two Johnny Cake Road parcels, where they were trying to attract the FBI center, which eventually settled on a more urban location inside the Erdle at Rutherford Plaza, where they've been ever since. Both of these lots have not attracted any business, and since they're upzoning, we are inundated with this high density zoning. Do we have DR five point five just across the street from this location, just catty corner to it? And it has generated just tremendous runoff into our streams. We have two-lane ditched roads curving that cannot handle this amount of traffic. The schools there, this is another one, this would be districted to Chadwick Element, I mean, Dogwood Elementary School, which at this time is at a hundred and eleven percent, and that is before the three hundred and sixty-eight townhomes on Johnny Cake Road are finished, which will contribute, let's say, I don't know, somebody in planning knows what the calculation is for a townhouse ratio to elementary school students. So you can just imagine what it will do to the capacity of Dogwood Elementary. Just adding more of the same is not fair to the community, to the infrastructure, to the schools. The works, so this work zone housing, this has got to be spread out through the county and not just concentrated in Woodlawn and Randallstown. So I would strongly support DR three point five. Otherwise, I would support leaving the zoning as is. The MLR is highly unlikely to be developed, and it certainly has no impact on schools.
I agree with Kathy.
If I could jump in here a little bit, is Kathy and I tried to come up with some reasonable agreement on this before we got to this point, and yeah.
Stop my hat.
I, I, I also did not support the, the ability to, to do the high density, the ten point five. So we were going back and forth on it. I can support the five point five here. I think it's in, it's in line with what is around the, the you know, the commercial use. You know, I would also support that. I don't support downzoning the property. So I, I personally think the five point five made sense. We couldn't come to an agreement on the difference. I don't want the ten, ten point five or whatever it is, so.
Point five isn't on the table, but I would like to make a motion to, to leave the zoning as is MLR with no changes and support staff recommendation. My motion.
All right, there's, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On, on four, zero, zero, seven, there is a motion to accept staff's recommendation by Ms. Wilson and Ms. Panero.
No, that was Tina. That was Tina.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, can I, are we done unreadiness? Can I add something?
We're, we're, we're now on unreadiness. There's been a motion with the.
So I, I wanted to add that recently the property has gotten public sewer, didn't have it. And the MLR zone is really not, it's not the hot, best use for the. By the way, the property is inside the Erdle. It is connected to public sewer now, so based on that.
And actually.
It's a change in circumstance.
Hold it, Kathy, let's, let's, Mr. Hold on, Kathy, let's, let's, let Mr. Hurst finish.
So I was just gonna say, that's why we have rezoning, because circumstances have changed, and that's a perfectly good reason to upzone property once it's been connected to public sewer.
Well, I would.
What we call as upzoning is just a changing zone. But, but go ahead, Kathy.
I would ask planning to confirm. I do not believe water and sewage has been extended to this property. It is extended across the street to the 60-plus rental townhouses that have been opened since, in the last two years, but it is not extended to this property at this time.
Okay.
I live there.
It's in the center of the road, so. They just have to connect.
Any, any further unreadiness?
Um, what are the, can I ask planning, or I guess we could see from the map, the, it looks like there's DR55, DR105. I mean, it, it, it almost seems like it fits with the, with, with the surrounding areas.
So what I think you've got, it is a real mix, right? You go from 406 to DR1 to DR5.5 to MLR. That's kind of in a. And that's my, that's, I shared this community with Kathy.
It backs up to the 10.5 and, and 16, so.
Well, it's also backed up to RC6, which, so, you know. Personally, I think Trump's higher density, putting high den, this density next to the RC6. And it was a mistake in 2000. Why should we compound it now?
All right, any, any further unreadiness? There is a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Burson, to accept the staff's recommendation. We will go to all votes. Mr. Schweitzer.
Before you ask this, the staff's recommendation is to maintain the current, the MLR status?
That is the staff's recommendation, yes.
Okay, I vote yes for that.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Penaro.
No.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halopka.
No.
Ms. Halford.
No.
Burson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
You say Heino? I say yes.
Mr. Hurst.
No.
Mr. Pearlau. Mr. Pearlau.
Yes.
Warren.
No.
Pearlau is a yes. Mr. Hurst, were you a yes or no?
I was a, a no, not against the staff recommendation.
Against the staff recommendation. And Mr. Pearlau, were you for or against the staff recommendation?
I was in favor of the staff recommendation, yes.
The motion carries. We're gonna go to item 008. Mr. Pearlau, this is, it looks like you wanted this to be reviewed, but you may be willing to remove it from the list. Mr. Warren, you also sequestered this item. 4008, 4008 is Owens Mills Investment Properties, 10600 Red Run Boulevard. MLIM is the existing zone. Staff recommendation is BL. Requested recommendation was BMCT.
And I was okay with the staff recommendations after our last review of it.
To move it to BL. And Mr. Warren?
Are they gonna be able to do what they, I still am uncertain that they can, it looks like they're doing some construction there now. Are they gonna be able to do what they need to do with that site if we don't provide the zoning?
That's a question for Stephen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Gunei Jok, and I'm the fourth district planner. So for, for, for 4-008, staff has modified the request, and we recommend BL. So the issue boundary is located outside of the town center, which is Owens Mills Town Center. So therefore, therefore, the city district cannot be applied here. The site is 1.44 acres. The applicant is proposing retail space, which is permitted by right in BL. So yes, they will be able to do what they want in the recommended zoning.
Then I support staff recommendations.
Want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to support staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
All right, that was Mr. Warren. Was that Mr. Heino?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not hearing any motion carries. All right, we're on 4010. Mr. Yeah, no, this is Todd Warren. 40, 4010 is Mr. Warren. Pull that one up. 4010 is petitioner's Rolling Road Minus LLC, 2740 Rolling Road. MLIM 01 acres to BMIM 01 acres is the requested zone. The staff recommendation is to retain the zoning. This is a really small sliver of land. Is this correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's right. It's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I want to put an electric panel on the sign.
They, they want to have a sign, and I, I was in support of allowing the business to have a sign, so that.
It's to redo the sign. The present sign has little letters, like a gas station changes their price of gas on it. And it's very labor-intensive to change it. They wanted to put an electronic sign. They, it has to go through the, the county departments to be approved for the layout, I guess, of it. And they're also planning to redo the front of the building, like resurface it as well, which doesn't need approval, but the sign does. You know, Rolling Road has become a four-lane road and an awful lot of commercial along it. So they were looking to redo the zone, and that's a requirement to have, to have the sign.
Does it conform with other signs on Rolling Road? Will it?
I think it's a more modern sign. It will have, you know, a changeable, what do you call it, electronic thing that will change every, you know, 15 seconds or every minute or whatever it might be. But again, is whatever the county code is.
Get my bearing straight. Can you go out a little bit? Where, where am I on Rolling Road?
I like Kathy's question, like, do other businesses in the area have those kind of signs?
Where is this road, guys? I can't talk. I'm having a hard time.
This is east of Windsor Boulevard.
Say that again. I'm sorry, you broke up.
East of Windsor Boulevard.
It's between the post office and the Wawa, Scott.
Uh, okay.
It doesn't look like there are other signs. I just hate to make it, you know, there's a lot of residential on the other side.
I would think the Wawa has a sign. If you're telling me it's there, the post office would have a sign.
What's there's that name? Just to make it compatible. What's the zoning for the post office and the Wawa?
BMAS, BMAS and BM.
I mean, this is, this is a mini storage. They want to be able to, you know, advertise their storage facility. You know, they're gonna, knowing the developer, they're pretty decent people in the county, pretty substantial people in the county. And, you know, they're gonna not sit there with a, you know, a blinking flashing sign. They just want to be able to put, you know, whatever might be their advertising situation for that moment. Might be, you know, first month's free or first month, you know, $2 or whatever. But they would like to be able to put a new sign up.
Looking on, looking on Google, it appeared, yeah, both the 7-Eleven to the south of it and the Wawa to the north of it, you know, have electronic signs to show their gas prices and things of that sort that are relatively large electronic signs, so.
They do, they do.
Can staff jump in?
Sure.
I'll jump in, if you don't mind, Gunei.
Yes, so the, the request on this one is for the box in front of the property to replace the existing freestanding signage with a changeable copy sign. So the problem with this one is that changeable copy sign is not allowed as is, like, it has to be, the entire property has to be in a business zone. So the property cannot be in MLIM and the signage in a BMIM portion. So the entire property should have been rezoned to BMIM.
Oh, my.
Yeah, this is, if I could jump in, Mr. Chairman, this is not a proper use of value zone. This would be a, this should be a variance or something done in, in a text amendment to, to the zoning code to, to, to address the issue that the sign doesn't match the conformity of, of the area. So I, you know, that's why the staff sort of recommended against it, exactly what Gunei said. It doesn't matter what the zone is around the box of the sign. It's about what the property is, and it's associated with the use.
So I have a question.
So we're using zoning as opposed to going through the sign variance request process. They're using the zoning to get the ability to do, to do the, the sign without rezoning the entire property, because I'm sure that's not what they want to do, right? It is an MLIM use for the.
Question of staff, please, then. Are you allowed to have a, well, are you allowed to have a mini storage in the BMIM, you know, zoning if we had, if we went, came in for a full change on the mini storage, can you do that? I wouldn't think the mini storage would be allowed in the BMIM zone.
Why, but then the issue boundary that was raised is just the box.
I, I, I understand that. I'm asking, can you have in a BMIM zone, if we change the whole zoning, could you have a mini storage facility in that?
I believe so. I believe storage either in BM or BL. I have to double-check again.
I, I, you know, I think that they probably checked it. I understand what you're saying, that you don't like them doing it. But if the ML won't allow the sign and other people along the area do have a sign, you know, why wouldn't you try to make it work for them, I guess, is my, my point.
Because it's against the Baltimore County zoning regulations. And they could go, actually, they could get the sign done to a special hearing.
So, so, my concern with this, and I've dealt with some of these signage issues, really probably the wrong use of, in my opinion, this is the wrong use of zoning, right?
Can I make a separate motion really quick? Can I just rezone the whole parcel?
That could be seriously adverse to what, what the proper hearing was.
Yeah, hold on. I just got a text from the property owner. He's fine with it, so.
Okay, I get it. The, the challenge is with the CZMP process, it is what is within the petition request. So we are limited to this point 01. That's what we're limited to. So that motion would be out of order.
May I make a motion?
Ms. Wilson.
I thought I already had a motion in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The motion, no, the motion is out of order, though, because it's only.
Being a motion to allow them to do that, I thought to, I thought originally I made the, maybe I didn't. I thought I made the motion to allow the, the client to have the sign, so maybe I didn't, sorry.
I know we're getting late, folks. Ms. Wilson, I will recognize you for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
So you've made a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that? Mr. Schweitzer? No, Mr. Heckman.
Kathy, before we continue, I'm just asking a question, Scott, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Would you mind, and I don't know if this is even a real motion, but Kathy, in your motion, which I will, I, I'll vote for your motion, could you add in there some language? We'll adopt staff recommendations, but encourage the property owner and staff to work with the property owner to get a sign variance to allow him exactly what he wants to do in that box? Ultimately, I think we're okay with a sign. Ultimately, a sign variance. We want him to get that sign variance.
Well, I'll be honest with you. If he already has a sign, and it's not the sign he wants, I would be reluctant to impose that on the community unless I knew what it looked like. So that's the whole process of this, of applying for the variance, because that gives it a public hearing. So at this point, just deal, and I appreciate what you're saying, Christina, and it's probably very reasonable, but people go through the special exception and variance process all the time, and lots of them are approved. So I just feel like this is the, an inappropriate avenue for this property owner to take. I mean, this is the ultimate spot zoning. So, you know, let him go through the, that he or she go through the usual process.
I have a question of staff. I'd like to know whether or not they can apply for a special hearing or variance, if that's what this particular one would be, in an ML zone to change their sign. Are they allowed to get that? Are they allowed a hearing?
I believe they are allowed to go to a special hearing to get the signage.
Are they allowed to, to do that?
Right, to a special hearing.
Yes, are, that's my question.
I believe so.
I don't want to believe. I want to know, you know, if that's there, because of my impression from talking to the owner of the, the storage facility, that was not allowed, and that's my concern.
Well, the changeable copy sign is not allowed under the MLIM right now. But in order to get it, they can go to a special hearing and see if the ALJ would allow it. So it was up to the ALJ to see if they would allow the, the changeable copy sign under the MLIM.
A changeable, changeable sign is an LED lit sign that changes the message. Is that what we're talking about?
We're talking about like many, you know, no different than Scott said, that he, Wawa has one and whoever the other place was, and, you know, I think that, again, you know, our, our need is to allow businesses to be successful. And if this is what it takes in today's world for a mini storage facility to be successful, I think you need to entertain it and have the opportunity to, you know, make changes. I mean, should we allow buildings to go into disrepair and not require the zoning inspectors to require repairs? I don't think so. I think we want to, you know, improve properties, and they believe that this is really important. So I understand that I'm being told that this is not allowed under the zoning procedures, but I want to be sure that that's really the case, and that they definitely can go and apply for a special hearing.
Um, Gunei, so there's not been any other properties in Baltimore County who, that have allowed for these little boxes to get their sign? Because I would think. Because I would think this property owner is pretty sophisticated. I don't think they would have gone through a whole rezoning process if they would have known they could have just gone the special, you know, the variance route. I mean, Jeff or Pete?
I am not aware of any but, because this, I call this real spot zoning, I am not aware of anything like this in the county. Again, maybe Pete and Jeff can chime in.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing up is Hill Management is the owner of this, they're a very large developer in Baltimore County, majority of their product is in Baltimore County. Just knowing how sophisticated they are with the amount of development that they own, I can't imagine that they wouldn't have just gone through the variance process if it was permitted, they would have definitely have done that. So I'm assuming they, they went this route because this was the only route that they didn't have to change on their zoning.
I'm under the same impression that this has been done, I mean, there's one in Pikestall on the side of a building. I, you know, I just want to be absolutely sure that when we're done this vote here, that they do have the right to apply for the special hearing. I mean, is there anybody else from planning that can give me a definite answer? Because I'm being told that they don't believe that they can apply for a special hearing.
I think we might need an opinion from zoning, even more so than planning as to whether or not something like this could be accepted. I mean, I just don't, it doesn't seem clear from what we're getting here.
So I did discuss with zoning about this issue, and that's how I came to find out that changeable copy signs are not allowed under MLIM if the property itself is not in a BM zoning, so I did have confirmation from zoning.
You had confirmation.
They, they said they checked, they said they checked with the zoning office supervisor and that they were allowed to do this because they couldn't get the hearing, that's what I'm told.
Right, and I have a section on the Baltimore County zoning regulation about changeable copy signs. It's section 450.7. B. Point one. And that section is talking about changeable copy signs and where they are allowed and where they aren't allowed.
I think we, let's, let's just stop for a second. I need to either hear from Jeff or from Pete. Please.
So the question would be, okay, go ahead, Jeff.
For a special hearing, usually the special hearing is the avenue that is the catchall for asking for some kind of relief. When there isn't something specific or clear, you know, you want to go from a side yard setback of 10 feet to eight feet, that's a clear request for relief. The special hearing is the avenue when that request for relief is in the gray zone. This could be in the gray zone. I know the signing, signing, signage regulations are probably the toughest ones to interpret. So I would lean or focus on what zoning has said in terms of why they have to do this.
Well, it sounds like, but Gane, you said that changeable copy is not allowed in an ML zone, how would they even be able to go in for a variance?
Well, because it's like Jeff said, they are seeking relief of what they cannot do under the regular zone, and so that's the reason why they will go to a special hearing to seek relief.
I think they would need to change it, I think they would need to change in the law, not just to go in for a special hearing now, I think they need to change in the zoning to even get their opportunity for a special.
And that would affect the whole county, that wouldn't just affect this one property.
There are, there are, let me make sure we're clear. Can request a, a special exception on signage? We had this discussion, I believe it was down in Dundalk for a, a request to restore sign on a building.
The Thunderbird.
Thunderbird.
Right.
And it was a combination of zoning and a sign variance that took place, if I recall, on that property. So the challenge on this one, in my mind, is, it, once again, if they were asking for the whole parcel, but this really is, this just strikes me as hitting a, hitting a net with a hammer. But, once again, there is a motion, there is a motion on the floor. And that motion, I believe, was to accept staff's recommendation from Ms. Wolfson, seconded by Mr. Heckman. We've had a great deal of discussion, we will take that motion to a vote. And we will do a roll call vote on this one.
Can we re, restate the motion again?
Motion on the floor is to accept the staff's recommendation. And I got to get back over staff's, staff's recommendation. Where are my notes on?
It's to keep the zoning as is and not.
Yes, MLIM, thank you. So.
All right.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Well, I, I'm going to reluctantly say I'll accept the staff's recommendation, but I agree with you and we're hitting a, a net with a hammer here if we have, if we had to do anything else, but I'll accept the staff's recommendation.
Penaro.
I'm really torn on this one, I'm going to vote nay.
Mr. Hartman.
Hi.
Mr. Halupka.
Yes.
Ms. Hefford.
I'm nay.
Okay, Ms. Burzens.
I'm saying nay because I'm not quite sure they can otherwise do it with that ML, so I feel like if this is their only chance, I'm going to vote.
Nina, like, can we come up with something different?
Agreed.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Heinold.
No.
Mr. Hurst.
No.
Mr. Perlow.
No.
And Mr. Wong.
No.
Fails, motion fails, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, I think I hear staff and I will, will listen to staff, yes.
Other than, how about if you give us time to go back and talk with zoning once more? Get you some clarity on whether this could go through a special exception so that you have the right information to make a decision?
If, if, if I can get a consensus from the board on that, I am good and we can bring this up. Can you get that back to us by our next work group meeting?
Yes, sir.
That's very helpful.
Very good.
Thank you.
So do I get a general consensus on that? From the.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, you're saying we would vote at the next meeting on this one, when we have more information?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, all right, I think this is, uh, my lost track.
On the Ravens draft.
4014. Katie, Katie Penaro, 4014.
Oh, did we miss one, did we miss 4012?
Let me see, I thought that one was, I didn't have that one on the list, Katie, we voted. We voted.
That's fine.
Not on the list.
All right.
Okay, I wrote that one down.
Question was 4014.
Okay, great. Okay, let me pull up my notes. Okay. So this property, you can see, you've got 795, the large, what is that, to the west. Then you have high powered, high tension power lines. And then you've got the, the, the strip right here, sorry. That's separating the residential, if you scan out, you can see residential on the other side. It's approximately 400 feet to the closest house to the west. Sorry, 795 is to the east. It's about 400 feet to the east to the closest residential area. So I thought that this would make sense to change the acreage, the 8.4 acres to MLIM. It just doesn't make sense to be residential.
Steph, staff's comments, oh no, Mr. Warren.
I, I don't have much to add, I agree with what she said.
And Steph.
So staff recommends retaining the existing RC4 zone. The proposal is not consistent with the goals and policies of the master plan. The site is located in Gulf Tier Four, which represents land approximating a natural condition. The site is in a resource preservation area and is located outside of the Urdo. The current RC4 zone classification is to provide watershed protection. The contractor equipment storage proposal is not compatible with the neighborhood. The property is surrounded by residential development and lacks direct access. Access to the site is to Glendon Trace and Franklin Station communities. Stockdale Avenue is narrow and in my view can't handle heavy equipment. All the public comments that we received voted in opposition to the request.
I would strongly oppose this proposal, heavy industrial use. This is, EJB is the Berg family with a long history of heavy commercial use and sometimes abuse. This RC4 is protection of the reservoir. If you zoom out there, that is watershed for the Liberty Reservoir. It's just an upzone to that extent is highly incompatible with the use in that area.
Kathy, would you be, would you be comfortable with maintaining RC4 to the east and to the west of the, of the, I believe, of the watershed? Or I would say to the east by seven, or east by 795 and west towards a community and doing MLIM for 8.4 acres in the middle of the two?
How are they?
8.3.
Only way they can access it is on Stockdale Avenue. And that's a two lane road. They, I live in a rural area and it is a nightmare with heavy trucks. And that's, heavy equipment will be going in and out of Stockdale regularly if, if this passes. It's simply not fair to the homeowners that have invested in a residential community.
May I add something?
I mean, can you see that, there's like no commercial right there?
I'm also not seeing a ton of residential.
If you're seeing, well, it's.
I'm seeing like five, like four, like what, seven houses?
Seven houses, where, where would that be?
I'm not counting anything across 795.
Well, that bridge of Stockdale Avenue goes right over 795 and that traffic would be traveling through that neighborhood to the east of 795 to get to a ramp at Franklin Boulevard.
May I add that the issue boundary is 15 acres, but the property itself is only eight acres. The remaining of the acres is right of way.
That's the right of way for 795, correct?
Yes.
So what, all right. Well, is there a motion on 4014?
I'll just add that I just, residential zoning, it just seems very impractical here. Just, it doesn't make sense for several reasons.
Would you want heavy truck traffic riding through your residential neighborhood?
I live in Baltimore City, so.
Will be heavy trucks and heavy equipment.
I mean, Katie, I, I understand your point that it, it looks like a, it would never really be a good residential site. But I also think Kathy's point that the, the only way to access it up when I'm looking on the map is through, it looks like a pretty winding, Stockdale's got a really tight turn before you even get over to the, the next main road. I'm not sure what kind of heavy use you could do in there.
I'm under the impression that they, the impression that they want to build a flex warehouse on this site. Like space that, you know, is not going to have the, the big trucks that Kathy says, I don't know if the owner is Berg, it doesn't say that, but if you tell me it is, you might know, but.
I don't know.
It is EJB. So.
All right.
I was unaware of any current plans, I just know that the current zoning at RC4 is not reasonable for this property.
Well, it's under RC4 because it is drainage to perhaps to the Liberty Reservoir.
But as it's being developed, they have to do their stormwater management. I mean, I just hate to always see us be saying that land can't be developed. Again, we have a limited supply of land left in the county.
But we, we shouldn't be making mistakes. And, and plopping, plopping this heavy use in the middle of residential, I mean, how does that conform with the master plan?
With all the housing around it, I'm just asking a question, would you be in favor of giving them residential zoning on the entire site? Residential, do you say is around it?
They have residential.
RC2 doesn't give you much, RC4 doesn't give you.
RC4 is, it doesn't change the fact that that is drainage for the, for Liberty Reservoir. They do have DR2 and DR3.5.
On.
Across 795.
Well, and, and for an acre, acre and a third. I just think, you know, people are entitled to develop something that's reasonable. I'm asking you a question, you're saying they can't have residential and they can't have commercial. So what do you do with the land, you just have to let it sit there and pay taxes on it?
Do they own the land?
Yes, as far as I know, whoever EJB that petitioned owns the land.
Well, we know that, we know that the petitioner doesn't necessarily have to own the land. Gane, do you know if AJB owns this property?
Yes.
I was going to say, it says, it says EJB LLC owner. If, if you were to scan, if you were to pull back, um, I think you'll get a better view of, of exactly is in the area. Um, you have a cemetery, you have a few, you do have residential, a few, but it's four hundred, you know, three hundred and eighty plus feet away. Then you have seven ninety-five. Um, so I, I don't, I have to concur with Howard that if not here, where?
Kathy, if you're concerned about, you know, heavy truck traffic, then make him sign a covenant that he won't use it for that. Let him build the flex warehouse.
I don't, I wasn't under the impression that heavy, uh, truck traffic was a, was a, uh, was a hundred, but that wasn't exactly going to be the use for it.
That's what I'm saying. So make him sign a co, make him sign a covenant that says he won't, you have big trucks or dump trucks, if that's what you're saying is your concern.
I mean, I, Howard, you made a good point. I mean, a covenant, I think, could help them, but to say they can't do anything there, that's not good.
Well, I'm. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What's the, is there a large stream running right through this issue number? I, I'm, I don't know if you can zoom in. Looks like there's a large transmission line.
Those are power lines.
Okay, so there's a large power line and then what's the, uh?
White, it looks like a road in.
That's the property line.
No, but the.
No, the white line.
White lines are.
Right by four zero one four, right by the, the issue.
A new IG.
No, this.
Can you click on it? And that's the wide of way.
That's the way into the property.
Okay.
So that's the wide of way.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and then their only access point is off of Stockdale.
Right.
And then I'm assuming they can't do anything in that triangle portion on the other side of the transmission line. Right? Maybe?
RC four, RC four gives you one u, unit per five acres. So it's not like they can't build anything now. They've chosen not to.
You're saying that all the other residential around it, which is probably three point five and whatever, but here they can only build three houses?
They can build one house per three acres. Yes, I mean, five.
You just said five acres, but.
Yes, and I, that's correct.
Okay, so they can get three houses then is what the acre allow.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who's gonna build their house beside the transmission line.
Um, yeah, like Aaron Brockovich is gonna come and, like, I, I don't even understand. So, so I mean.
Let me ask you this. I mean, is there any, um, is this, looks like, for me, this looks like a candidate for just green space. Um, which I know. I'm just, uh, uh, anyway, all right.
And as I say, because, just because you invest in land, it's just like the stock market. It does not guarantee a return. You know, sometimes you invest in land, it doesn't give you a return. This may be one of these cases. This is like an orphan piece of land here between the transmission lines and seven ninety-five. It's too far north of the Owings Mills District to be developed like Owings Mills was. Sometimes you make that bad decisions, you know.
But you.
Cause there are no other.
You just said it's in between transmission lines and seven ninety-five, so. I, I mean, you honestly just want to keep it RC four. It, that just doesn't seem.
I know that's what the community wants and they have commented probably on this issue.
Which community?
Um, that would be Rice's Town, um, Glendon Trace, um.
This isn't anywhere near Glendon.
Rice's Town Improvement Association, Rice's Town Owings Mills Glendon Community Coordinating Council, Charlie Homeowners Association, um.
Any that are relevant to the property? Cause again, when you scale back, I don't really see much residential.
I don't see much ML anywhere else either. I mean, it's all green space or RC. So I, I, I just don't see plopping an ML where there's nothing adjacent to it. There's no business. There's no other M zone there. I, I just see RC on the west and DR two on the east on the other side of, uh, seven ninety-five. I, I, and I just don't, you know, you, if you do this, if you upzone this or change the zoning here, what about the other side of Stockdale Avenue? We could start doing that. Now you've got creeping ML going up and down this corridor between, uh, the RC four on the left and, uh, seven ninety-five. So I, I just, I just think this should remain the same.
Yeah, I requested this earlier. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm, I'm due to retain the existing zoning as recommended by staff.
A second.
That was Mr. Hartman.
Correct.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any further unreadiness? We've had a lot of discussion on this one. Further unreadiness, we'll take it to a vote.
I was gonna say, Kathy, would you be open to, we've talked about it several times this evening and last night, to a covenant?
Not for ML. I'm sorry.
We've got the motion on the floor. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer.
I vote, uh, yay on this one.
Ms. Panero.
No.
Hartman.
Aye.
Halupka.
Yes.
Stafford. Burzens.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Heidl.
No.
Mr. Herbst.
Yes.
Perla.
Believe, based on who you told me owns it, I need to reclusive myself.
No.
All right, motion carries. Four zero one six. Mr. Warren, four zero one six.
I thought, is this this? Can staff tell, um, so where, can staff tell me what this one is?
This is eleven, six forty Red Run Boulevard, the West Cherry Hill Court. It is a point three, uh, excuse me, it is an oath, an O three. Existing statute recommendations is, is that it remains O three. The petitioner is Randy B. Wells. MLIM is the requested zoning of three point three acres. We are looking at it. You'd like Ms., um, the app to start?
Yeah, to start on this one. I'm trying to find notes.
Kene, if you could start please.
Sure. So this one is currently O three. The request for MLIM for flex warehouse. Um, as you can see, this is in the middle of residential and we will, um, we will residential. It's in the middle of, um, residential area. It's at the edge of the Urdo line. Um, the, um, the staff has recommended to retain the existing zoning. Um, the site was rezoned in two thousand eight uh, from all our one, RC five to O three.
I, I looked at my notes. I think I was trying to have this guy have the ability to put a, uh, warehouse on his property, but I'll just move on. I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Warren. Is there a second?
Second, Christina.
My second.
Ms. Burzens beat you to it. All right, there's a mo, there's a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for four zero, long issue four zero one six. Please say aye.
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 Aye. Those have the same right, not hearing any, motion carries. All right, the last item of the evening, folks.
Yay.
Yes. Four zero one seven, four zero one seven, uh, Mr. Warren. Four zero one seven. This is currently zone DR sixteen. Lionswood Homeowners Association petitioner with DR three point five. Staff's recommendation is DR sixteen.
I was called by the community on this one. This community was cut in half by the extension of Owens Mill Boulevard to Liberty Road. Um, there is a ton of pressure, uh, on this community with, you know, the, the heavy debt zoning, the R, R sixteen. I probably can support some zoning less than R sixteen. And I, I am the, this may be the only time ever in my life that I'm gonna downzone. So, so it's hard for me. I'm swallowing hard right now. Um, uh, but, you know, I, I do hear the community's concerns. Um, my only issue with this one is that it's in a uh, it's a legal battle going on right now, so uh, I don't even know if it makes sense to do it without the, going through the legal battle, but I'll let staff talk to that. But, uh, I'm, I'm of the mind to try to come up with a less dense zoning than sixteen on this one, so. With that, uh, I'll throw it to staff.
So the current zoning on this one is DR sixteen. The Lionswood Homeowners Association has raised this issue for, um, downzoning it to DR three point five. It is a, um, development plan pending approval on this site. It's, um, the enclave at Lions Mill Road. It's for below market weight, um, family housing of sixty, of fifty-three units. So the plan went to the approval process and it was denied by the ALJ. The applicant has filed a board of appeal in the beginning of this year and I believe it's pending approval. Um, staff has recommended to, um, retain the existing zoning since it was on the, you know, legal battle and we didn't know, uh, what the approval process will give, what we will take out of the, um, board of appeal.
Todd, you like, you like affordable housing. Why are you opposing this?
I, I love affordable housing and I, I think we need more affordable housing. I was just worried about the density of this one as it relates to, um, you know, I, I would love some affordable housing in Hunt Valley and some affordable housing uh, in Towson, some affordable housing other than in Dundalk, Owens Mills and Catonsville all the time. Uh, so, um, again, this is totally not my thing to do. I'm struggling with this very hardly. Uh, to do that, I just, I was thinking maybe there was a way to, you know, the other problem I have with it is that there's already a plan in place, so, um, you know.
It, how, I, I'm not familiar with.
Let me ask a question. I really want to ask this of Kathy, if I could. Um, have you gotten any feedback, Kathy, since this is the fourth?
Yes, I have. And this has also been an issue that absolutely filled the Randalls Town Community Center last year. Um, with residents that were opposed to this development. Um, if you zone out a little bit, you'll see that there is a huge HUD to the west of this. Um, the Ballard property, very, very, very intensive. They've got that on that side. Um, and the, the community at large, including it may not just in, on that, in that Lionswood community, but to the, to the south, the whole Randalls Town community. And you are just, we are saturated with works of housing. You know, it's, it's, it's just not fair to spread this around the county. Um, I, you know, we, the county was involved with the consent decree. You know, we know better than to cluster all this housing in one area. And I think it's very reasonable to at least make the zoning compatible with the DR five that it, that joins it with, with, um, um, the Lionswood community and the community across the way, you know, Patty Corner. You've got Ballard Green there. You've got three point five. Um, just adding more sixteen is just, it's just not fair to the community.
May I add something to make it fair? Um, because on this issue, the residents of the Lionswood Homeowners Association didn't get a chance to submit their public input because they were not aware of the change of format. They were still waiting for that public hearing that was scheduled and didn't know that they was, they could actually, um, submit their, their comments online. So they contacted me and told me about that and I wanted to let the planning board members know that they didn't get a chance to submit their input and their opposition, um, for this. Not the opposition, but actually their support for the requested zoning.
And they also, they, they did, in the comment section here, I've noticed they've submitted comments tonight.
What's the requested zoning from the associate, from the, uh, local folks?
Three point five. On a downzoo to three point five.
I'm not.
I just add that this is an issue we talked about briefly before, where you're changing the rules in the middle of a project and that's exactly what this happens here. That's my concern with this. Um, they're in the middle of an appeal and, and we're talking about downzoning the property in the, in the middle of pending litigation. It just, to me, that seems incredibly unfair.
Yeah, um, Tom took the words right out of my mouth. This sounds, um, I'm not familiar with this, uh, in all honesty, but it sounds very familiar to the Four Corners Jacksonville, uh, Starbucks issue.
Well, this is a much beg bigger deal than a Starbucks though. This is, this is an impact on a community where the school, the local school is already at a hundred and sixteen percent for elementary school. So, um, how many units are they talking about in this development?
Fifty-three.
You have fifty-three units.
Yeah.
Um.
It's one thing to say, it's, it's one thing to say about downzoning in the middle of a project, but to be honest, I have to ask questions. And what status is the project in? Uh, they haven't, have they haven't broken ground yet? Have they gotten, you know, what, I mean, what's, how far, how far out are they from the project? And I'm trying to be fair too, but the point is, is that, uh, you know, if the project hasn't started or it's several years, maybe it's two or three years out.
It's not, it's not.
How far out is it?
And I, I brought this up, so I want to be fair about this too, that people spend millions of dollars on these things, getting them ready. I mean, this, you know.
I know that.
Eagle fees and all kinds of stuff. I don't know how much they spent on this one, but it's a substantial amount of money, so don't minimize what people have spent to do.
I know.
Can I, can I speak, please? You all ready? I just want to make sure that it's okay.
Yes, Mr. Perla.
Thank you. I'm gonna take up the manter for, uh, Mr. Warren in this case. Um, my business is housing. And Kathy, I gotta disagree a little bit with that we're putting all of the affordable workforce housing in Randalls Town. There is a lot, but it's also all over the county from Lansdowne to Towson. Who I fought at the second district hearing at Pikesville High that the church should be allowed to have affordable workforce housing right in the middle of Pikesville. We have a great need in Baltimore County for this kind of housing all over. Developer here has built another project in Randalls Town and it's a beautiful eighty-four unit project. And I gotta tell you, when I was at the groundbreaking and I saw people that were not in wheelchairs, but in wheel beds that were handicapped and were able to have an apartment renting for three, four hundred dollars, I wanted to. I wanted to cry. And I've been all over the county and I've seen the need for the housing. We are a changing county. We are a minority county now. And I believe that we have to have this, this, this housing all over the county and more of it. We have a consent decree. We have to comply with it. The county executive understands that. And I believe that when you have projects and really good developers, I think you gotta find a way to help them bring this kind of housing. I understand that it brings contention from the neighbors, um, who have been there and now don't want it. You know, this particular site, I'm teasing, but I went to Happy Acres Nursery School where the site was, okay? Got a picture of me in kindergarten. But I believe that where it is, near the town center, near the subway, near the uses, it's a good use for the property. Um, you know, I would reclusive myself from the vote, but I really believe it's time that we stop fighting affordable housing throughout our county. I think it's something that we have to get past and say, there is a great need for it. Um, you know, the county executive was right when he passed that section eight can be anywhere and it needs to be accepted, and this is what I really believe. Um, you know, I really believe that somehow the neighbors have to understand that it's there. These are not tenements. These are not, you know, public housing in Baltimore City that are all being renovated now, because I've done a lot of them in the city that have turned into beautiful projects. I'm sorry to give my speech, but I really think it's time that we stop fighting it because it's in my backyard.
All right, Howard. I do affordable housing and advise faith-based organizations on affordable housing all the time. And, uh, so I am a proponent of affordable housing. This one is a little close to me, so I, I am gonna just share my perspective on it. This is a neighborhood that I just about moved into some twenty plus years ago. I was fortunate enough to pay attention to the map because I would have been in one of those houses that got cut off by Owens Mills Boulevard. And so my wife and I pulled out and said, no, don't think we want to do that. Um, a lot of folks were not as aware of looking at planning maps and figuring out what we're gonna go in. So this is a community that I think has already had some, has borne, um, some experience of, um, feeling that government has failed, quite frankly. So it's, it, it, it is, it is a, it is a issue that is really near and dear to that Lionswood, um, community. If we took a map, and I'm gonna share some things, um, over twenty years ago, I actually ran for office in the tenth legislative district. Um, and one of the things that I did was an overlay map to figure out a couple of things. From a socioeconomic perspective, where were folks from, uh, receiving their section eight vouchers and where were they moving to in Baltimore County? Um, and I did that map and I colored it and darker it got was where people stayed. And unfortunately, the tenth district had the largest population of section eight and the largest population of group homes in Baltimore County. And unfortunately, if I did an overlay map of the county today, that would still be the case. So I agree wholeheartedly that we have to meet our affordable housing, um, objectives. I'm one hundred percent supportive of that. I am not comfortable with how that has played out over the years. Um, and this to me seems to be in keeping with how it has played out in Baltimore County over the years. Little sensitive about this issue, guys. Um, I don't usually kind of jump out at this. I respect the developers that are involved in this. Um, I, you know, I'm familiar to, and I know they will do a good job. Um, but I know that the community does not want this. So that's my two cents. Now, having said that, as chair, I'm ready to accept the motion for four zero one seven.
Chairman Phillips, do you suppo, do you support this project?
I do not, I am not comfortable with creating that additional density and putting more affordable housing in this particular district. No, not.
Thank you for the clarification.
Hold on, are we creating density or is there a request to downzone it?
So we're requesting to downzone it.
We, we.
But, but if we keep the zoning as it is, yes, that will, that will increase the, uh, intensity and increase the issues with the schools that we talked about and all the other things that I've just discussed.
You're supporting the downzoning?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we support the staff's recommendation, no.
Nancy.
Zoning.
Second.
May I ask a question of the planning staff?
Sure.
So let me, let me, let's do this first. So I've got, I've got Nancy with a motion. And who did I hear seconded?
Wolfson.
Wolfson. And that is to accept the requested zoning of DR three point five. Okay. Question of staff.
Um, how long has this currently been zoned, uh, DR sixteen?
Um, as long, as far as I know, it has always been DR sixteen. Um, I checked back to nineteen ninety-six. Jen, you can double check for me, please. Um, when we started the two hundred scale map, it was DR sixteen.
Okay. Mr. Phillips, as I appreciate your opinion wholeheartedly, but I am just not comfortable with downzoning a property that has been zoned for as long as, as long as we know. I think it's only fair to the current owner, um, to maintain the current zoning.
That's a, that's a fair.
And I don't, I don't support going all the way down to three point five either. I'll, I'll let that be known. I mean, I'm, I'm swallowing some form of downzoning, but I, I don't support going all the way to three point five.
Todd, do you have another recommendation?
I wish I wasn't involved in this. Is that, is that a good recommendation?
How about, how about a, uh, how about a compromise? Uh, it was, it's been sixteen, uh, for, for so long and three point five is, is really, uh, is really a, an extreme change. What's, what's wrong with, say, ten point five? And that ten point five is in keeping with, uh, some of the other areas, uh, in not too far, not too distant away.
Make a motion.
I think Herbst would.
You have a motion on the floor. Hold on, Nancy, you have a motion on the floor. Are you accepting that, that?
I'll, I'm gonna pull it back and let the other motion.
Yeah, can we let Herbst make his motion? He was in line in front of you guys.
That sounds good.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the need to downzone. I would keep it the same, but it doesn't sound like I have, I have the support there. But I'll, I'll make a, we'll try it. I'll make a motion to, uh, to keep the property DR sixteen and, um, along with the staff recommendation.
Who said, so hold on a second. So we had a motion withdrawn. Nancy, are you withdrawing your motion?
I withdrew my motion.
Okay. Mr. Herbst is making a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Which is, what's the zoning?
Keep it DR sixteen.
All right.
And that motion was seconded by?
Panero. This is to keep it DR sixteen, correct, Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Just want to confirm. Thank you.
Unreadiness.
Yeah, this is, this is Heckman. I, um, agree with Jonathan, what he said earlier about, I think it's a dangerous precedent. We, um, while the property has been, um, designed, developed and is in the judicial process, we change the zoning right at the time. We talked about also last night with the Blue Stem project. We all agreed that that's not a good idea.
I could agree with that.
Right. Any other unreadiness, further comment? We're gonna take this to a vote, Mr. Schweitzer.
Uh, I, I would agree with keeping it at DR sixteen.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
The Hartman?
Aye.
The Halupka?
Yes.
Obstaining.
Burzens?
I'm gonna abstain as well.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
The Heckman?
Yes.
The Heinel?
No.
The Herbst?
Yes.
Pearlau?
I reclusive myself from the vote.
Mr. Warren?
Fuck. Yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean that to be heard.
Yeah, it's, it's fine. Motion, the motion.
Nine fifty, kiss her a bed.
I know.
The motion carries. And folks, look, we, we, um, we all come to this from our different perspectives. And my belief is we have to respect each other's perspectives, um, as we have these discussions. And for those who are observing us, I just want to say I am, uh, very appreciative and proud of the fact that we hang in there, we discuss these things, and we make decisions in a very democratic process. Um, and at the end of the day, we're not all going to agree on what is right, but we are going to come to some conclusion and collectively as a group, what we submit is what the group has agreed to, right? It is what the group ultimately through a democratic process has agreed to. I thank you all. I probably, um, talked more this evening specifically about an issue than I think I have in my entire six or seven years on this board. But, you know, now you know how I feel about certain things, and it just is what it is. So once again, thank you all. We're done for the night. Are there any administrative matters that the staff needs to update us on? Thing from the staff.
Just, uh, your next session is next Tuesday night. Uh, we will have follow-up with you on the sign issue. Um, and hope you get a good night's sleep. Did some hard work tonight.
You kept Don Fabi up too late, too.
Five, five.
Thank you, planning, planning. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Who did the Ravens get?
Five thirty next Tuesday.
Watch. You can watch now, Howard. Everyone, good night.
Good night.